Well done. Thank you. Yeah, so as councillor Rudehouse just said, Marianne Humphries is running a bit late. She's been stuck in traffic. She may turn up, she may not turn up, we will just wait and see. I've got apologies from councillor Pennyanna O'Donnell and also Mr Phil Johnson, who is one of our co-opted members. I've got no other apologies at this point. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest? No? Oh yeah, Claire, sorry.
My interests have changed.
Can you put your mic on?
My, my declared interests have changed and they are with legal, but they're not on the printed documents yet. Although they're adapted anyway, so they won't make it on there.
Thank you for letting me know. The minutes of the previous meeting, which I will get the vice chair to sign, I won't sign. But has anyone got any amendments or changes or comments? This was the meeting in September. All good? Excellent. There's no public speaking, I haven't been notified of any public speaking at all. We've got no members of Public Aid today. So now we're on to question time. So are there any questions for the Cabinet portfolio holders that we have here today? No questions for the Cabinet. And then we have updates from the portfolio holders or assistant directors and directors, if anyone's got any updates, councillor Ford.
Thank you for that. I've just got a couple really. Gerry, councillor Rudehouse, mentioned it in Cabinet this week regarding early year entitlements and provider rates. We're just going through preparations and progressing on this piece of work and hopefully we will, we will share that with you in a briefing note, as mentioned in the Cabinet. Admissions are preparing for secondary transfer on March 1st with provisional placements, which have already been mapped out. All children that have applied will receive a place in Warwickshire. And I just wanted to mention the Fair Access Protocol, which was launched last week. My understanding is 26 vulnerable children were placed at secondary, three at primary, and was well received by head teachers on the panel and we're making further amendments, improvements for the next panel. But just wanted to say a huge thank you to the team involved because there's been a huge amount of work, not only with the head teachers, but also within the organisation as well, to make sure that panel was absolutely on point. So a big thank you from me around the FAP process. Thank you, that's all the updates from me.
Councillor Martin?
Yeah, thank you. I've actually got three updates this morning. And the first one, they're all good news stories, to be fair. The first one was that we actually submitted an application to join the Children's Social Care Sector Led Improvement Programme, 2425. I'm really pleased to say that our application to be a sector-led improvement partner, to help other local authorities improve their children's services, has actually been successful. And it means we'll be funded to provide support to other councils to improve their children's services. It's also recognition in the sector that Warwickshire is a leader in children's early help and social care. We'll get feedback on our application later this month and the policy and strategy team will set up a budding arrangement with existing SLI partners to help us familiarise ourselves with the programme and to provide support as we begin work as a partner. We'll work, they'll work with us in February and March to agree our capacity to deliver the work and agree our grant allocation. And our grant letters will be issued to us by the end of March this year. So we have to sign that before we can commence the work. So I think that's excellent because it just shows that they, they consider that our children's services is obviously one of the best, otherwise they wouldn't be asking us for that, for our help. So that's a good news story for us. Second one is that our children's homes, the Warwickshire County Council Children's Homes, we've managed to complete four now. We have one yet to be completed, but that should be April this year. And we've got another one that we're looking at. So that would be six if they all come online, but certainly the, the four that are completed should be up and running shortly. So that's good, so that should save us some money as well. And it also keeps our children within our, our boundaries. And the last one is, yesterday I visited one of the Loudmouth sessions. I think you've all had a briefing sent to you about it. I think it's a great programme, it's good prevention for exploitation for our children. There's 12,000 of them, I've actually seen it up to now. And I, I was really surprised, it was year four and five, the one I went to, but they put on a performance and the, the kids really got involved in it. And I must admit, if they asked me some of the questions they asked them, I thought, well, I can't answer that because I can't remember. But they put their hands up on the answer and they really get involved. So if you've got any, any that you want to go to or you think that you would like to attend, because it's not just for small children, it goes right up to secondary school and it's different programmes that are given to each, each set. If you contact John, he'll let you know where they are and when they are, well worth going to. So those are my updates, thank you.
Thanks. On the, on the first one, so the sector-led improvement, is there any automatic read-across to Ofsted inspection grades? Because obviously I'm thinking what we really want to get is outstanding through Ofsted and I wondered if there's any, any relationship between those two, those decisions?
So, there's never an automatic kind of guarantee in terms of the, the Ofsted judgement, but it certainly gives confidence, I think, to the sector and to Ofsted, that we've got that status by the DFE that they think that we can help other people. And I think it's a real cycle of that, you know, we, we were working with Leeds when they were outstanding and they've been helping us improve and now we're one of those sector-led improvement local authorities helping other people. So it's all will be helpful to our, to our mission to get to, to outstanding, but it, there's no, never any guarantee, as you know. But we'll certainly be making it clear to Ofsted that we've, we've got that status from the DFE to, to help others improve.
If there's nothing else, still no chair. Corporate parenting, then, thank you. Who's leading on this?
Yeah, thank you. There is, it is in your pack, but I will go through a few things because some of it does need highlighting because again, it's something that's quite good. So we start off with the Children in Care Council meeting and they're actually going through their webpage and flyers to gather information and try and get them updated. They discussed young people's views about accommodation, including foster homes, residential homes and supported accommodation. All of that will be going to the sufficiency strategy. They also had thoughts and views to be included into the Hay Foster Carer booklet. Young people supported with creating videos and information for the CICC webpage and flyer. So they are getting involved, so that's, that's really positive. They did identify some discussion for priorities and they're actually listed, I won't go through them. And then there was the Care Leavers update. Young people consulted about what they think would be helpful to have in a mental health box to support young people who are struggling with their mental health. And because of that discussion, they have actually put certain items, they've created some mental health boxes to go out to people that are struggling. So again, that's positive. Their, their views are also sought on the Rights Entitlement Book in a preparation for redesign for the new year and they discussed access to records and what they know and understand about how they can get access to their records. And then there's the Care Experience Week. So that went on, they had various events between the 26th of October and the 1st of November. Young parents' party, younger asylum seekers from Vietnam, unaccompanied young asylum-seeking children and our British Care Leavers. So they all had functions prior, around the Halloween time, so it was based on Halloween. And then we move on to the UASC football tournaments, where we got one second place and overall, we actually got a first and won the Care Leavers weekly tournament, which I think is fantastic, a good achievement by us, by our, the, the team. And it shows just how hard they've worked in their training and everything to get to that level. So well done to them. We've got some apprentices involved in the training, so the Voice Influence and Change team have been working alongside the apprentices and getting their feedback. We did a relationship and sex education training specifically for arrived, newly arrived young asylum-seeking children. So they, they weren't for ourselves, they were for Sudanese and Eritrean, Kurdish and Patsy. And they, they did attend, so we had eight on the first session, eight on the second, then two lots of two. But because their culture is so different from ours, that's why they're getting that training, so that they can understand how our, our culture differs from theirs. Then there was a youth conference on the 3rd of November, I did actually attend this. And it was actually the Voice Influence and Change team and colleagues that actually put this on. I could say that it's one of the best conferences I've actually been to. I've never been to one of these, but I've been to plenty of others where you just sit and you're bored and you're waiting for the speaker to finish, to be fair. But this, it was interactive, it was brilliant. So if you get the opportunity, I can thoroughly recommend you go to that, it's on your day. We had a residential brothers and sisters feedback and most of them, they, they said they liked it and able to spend time with their siblings and that they were meeting and being with people in a similar situation and it was really good. There's a list there of other things, like stop separating or something like that, which is, that has come from the children, so that's something that we're working on. So we've got more support connecting with brothers and sisters still in care even when they have left care, so that's what they're asking for. And more family time with brothers and sisters in care and with family members. And we moved down to the DFE befriending and mentoring programming bid for grand mentors. The end of August last year, we actually applied for some funding from the DFE as part of their befriending mentoring programme to support the work of the grand mentors. And we actually achieved and got £107,000 secured to actually support this work till the end of March 2025. So again, that will be invaluable to us. And then there were several Christmas parties where everybody really enjoyed themselves. I won't go into all of that, you can see it for yourselves. And then the, the last thing really is Norma's hampers. I think you've all heard of Norma and she actually produced, again this year, 250 hampers. So that's something for her to be proud of. And everybody that's collected stuff to go into those hampers, that's really positive. So well done to everybody involved in that.
Any questions or comments?
On the training that we're giving for the unaccompanied asylum seekers, how many unaccompanied asylum seekers do we actually have within Warwickshire, first of all?
So the, there's a national, a national transfer scheme, so every local authority has to have a percentage of their population of UAS children. So Warwickshire's target for that nationally set is 119 UAS children. We are meeting that objective, it kind of goes up and down depending on their age profiles. But today, I think we've got that type, that type of, I think it's actually 117 today. So that, those are the number of children that are in care, but then obviously those children were responsible for when they leave care, when they're 18 plus. So in total, we've got about 40% of our Care Leavers are, are UAS children. So we've got a sizable population and we get funding for that from the government. We're working really hard with our, one of the pressures really around that is about placements for children. Most of them are aged 16, 17, so they tend to be in supported accommodation and we're working with providers to set up and open, we've been quite successful in this, supportive accommodation for those young people. So it's a national transfer scheme and we've got an obligation to that and we're meeting those obligations.
What's the dispersal like around Warwickshire for that sort of set-up?
So I guess there's different elements to the kind of asylum-seeking teams and things really. So I guess that the, the unaccompanied children who are, you know, come here without any parents, they, the 119 children that are currently in care, actually we used to have, majority of them would be living outside of Warwickshire, in Birmingham and other places. That's changed considerably over the last sort of six to eight months with the, the support that we've been able to galvanise around supportive accommodation, more are based in Warwickshire. So majority, I would say, of those inside Warwickshire, either in Leamington, some are in, in the north, but the majority of them are actually in Leamington where our supportive accommodation is. So yeah, I, I can get some more specific data for you and information. In terms of sort of the wider, if there's a sort of the wider point around refugees and asylum seekers that my service support as well, in terms of dispersal, we, we get data from the Home Office around that and I can provide you with some more details about it. It changes and fluctuates all the time. In terms of the hotels that the Home Office have got open, they've just closed two, they've given us notice of the Leamington Hotel is due to close and actually there's very little people there now, it will close in the next few weeks. And they've just closed the Rugby Hotel. So there are changing, it is a changing, moving feast really, but I can provide some more details to you, Claire.
So on that, can you also provide me the details of the pathways that they actually take from the minute they hit the ground in the UK to when they end up in Warwickshire? Because I know there's going to be concerns, we, we, we see things on the news about unaccompanied children actually not being children and, and what verification process do they go through before they actually get to us and come into our system as unaccompanied children? Because I think we need absolute clarity on that for, for the public. So if you can send to me that information, I'd be most grateful, thanks.
Absolutely, I can send you some more details and that's fine. I mean, most, the unaccompanied asylum-seeking children will come through Kent, majority of them, and they'll be assessed by the Home Office there. There is a, the age assessment of children is, is incredibly difficult and is, is an, is an issue that has been raised nationally, as I'm sure you're aware. There's, all of our team are trained in age assessments, but it's not, you know, it's not assigned and it is difficult. And where we do have age disputes with the Home Office, we've got a good relationship now, I would say, around some of those issues with the Home Office to escalate those and be clear, you know, these, in our view, they're not children and we're not taking them. So, but it, it is a very difficult area. I'll, I'll send you a briefing, I'm happy to have a chat to you about it.
I, I would hope that actually we take a robust approach to that because I think there's too much pussyfooting around this, this kind of topic where we are on the side of caution and actually sometimes we probably shouldn't. So I would like some reassurances that there are a robust approach and the fact that we're actually having to give unaccompanied children who are really young adults when they are 17, they are young adults, the fact that we're having to give those training on how to behave in a, a relationship manner, we need some reassurance to the public because obviously somebody's going to listen to this and then make what they will of it and this is why we need clarity. But yeah, I would say that they are young adults rather than children and should be treated as such.
So we've got Nigel on this specific point and then Geoff.
Thanks Chair, just really quickly, I think it's worth, worth pointing out that our problem actually generally, or the thing that happens generally, is the other way round. What we find is not that lots of children come here, turn out to be adults, what we find is that adults are placed in, or people are placed in adult hotels who subsequently turn out to be children when they're age assessed. And that is the biggest risk because obviously they are placed in hotels by the Home Office on the basis that they, they don't need protections that children would need. And therefore when they turn out to be children, then obviously we have to put those things in place. So, so I suppose to summarise, there are, there are far more cases of adults turning out to be children than there are of children turning out to be adults.
Thank you. It's, it's all good stuff this, particularly the, the RSE training and the ground mentoring. But what we have here, of course, is just inputs. It would be good to, at some point, get some feedback as to the effectiveness of this sort of acculturation in particular, but I'm also very interested in the ground mentoring to see what impact that's having. So could I just put a general request for some, some feedback and some outcomes? Thank you.
I, I, we'll, we'll make sure, we, we detail that and come back to you Geoff, that's not a problem. And we can look at that at a future committee meeting if members want to.
Thanks for that, I thought it was the Chair for that. Any other questions? Okay, and we're asked to then note the work of Children in Care Council, Leavers Warham, et cetera, and then the panel acknowledges the work that continues to take place with young people. Is there anything you want to add to that or is that all okay? There you go. Silence is good. So we move on, quarter two, Integrated Performance Report, which we've all read and there's nothing on the screen.
Absolutely no pressure. Amy's going to run it from, you can stay there if it's easy for you, Amy.
You want me to do that, don't you? Yeah, sorry. One of them dazed today. So yeah, I, I guess just to be really clear, I think on here is that this isn't rag-rated, it's effectively what you've got in front of you is either it's green if it's on track or it's red if it's not. And so it looks quite red in places as well, which I'm going to try and focus on. So I think it's just important to recognise that, that it isn't rag-rated, it is either it's green if it's going well and it's, and it's red if it's not on track. And you can see there that the majority of, of, of performance for this committee is on track now. Let me, if you get to slide four, oh I'm sorry, slide seven. So each of the sections, I'll try and summarise, I'm not going to go through them all and obviously you can come back and ask any questions on these. So this is the one that's really focused on, on education and you've got a number of, of measures here that are, are on track and are doing really well. You know, I, I think there's been a real improvement in the percentage of good and outstanding maintained primary schools, which we wanted to highlight. And actually a number of these measures are on your agenda for a deeper analysis later, so I probably won't go into too much more detail on some of those. The one that stands out there is the percentage of uptake of places for eligible two-year-olds. So that has improved overall, 78 is where we're actually at now and it was lower than that, so it is improving, but it's not at our target of 85. And there's, there's a lot, there is a piece of work between Children and Family Service and the Education Service, really getting to parents about what, there is, you know, there is eligible free nursery places for two-year-olds and we really want them to take it up. So through the Family Information Service and other things, we're really targeting those parents, contacting them, making sure they know they're eligible and trying to encourage them to take that up. So that, that is, you know, something that we're working towards and is improving overall, but it's not where we want it to be yet. The next slide is, I think, again, I think that overall, the number of 16, 17-year-olds participating in, in education is improving and, which is really positive to see. And that has improved and gone up to 94.9. And, but again, you know, on here, the one that stands out is that an area for us that is remaining static is the percentage of children in education healthcare plans who are attending mainstream school. We've got some work to do around that and I'm sure Ross and others will know the detail of that and it's, it probably will again, come up on the agenda later, but we're, 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 I think we're about eight percents away from the national average on that and there's some work to do on that, but I don't know whether Ross or anyone wants to add anything to that.
Thanks John, I'll, I'll pick up a bit more and we've got centre and, and analysis on the, on the agenda next, I think, after, after this. I'll hold fire for the moment.
And then the next slide please. So this is the slide I, I don't like, it's too red and I'm sure you don't like it either. I think a couple of things that I wanted to point out here really around, some of the measures are, are annual measures, the public health ones, so we don't get them yet, there's not necessarily an update which isn't helpful, but we, we know there's areas for improvement around, you know, hospital admissions for self-harm, for example, and alcohol issues. And there is significant work taking place around those. And I think, you know, those updates have been given to members before, but we're waiting for the, you know, the next cycle because performance is annual and, and so we're not seeing any results of that yet. The other ones that relate to my service, I wanted to talk a little bit about, so the child protection ones isn't on track because we did set an ambitious target there, 330 children subject to child protection plan, it's 361. That's, you know, it's not on track where we'd like it to be, but actually we still have the lowest and best numbers of child protection in, in the West Midlands. So many, most local authorities in the West Midlands have seen significant rises in child protection. We've seen a rise, but nowhere near to the extent of our, of other local authorities or stat neighbours. And, you know, in many ways, you'd want children who need the protection to have a child protection plan in place. So, you know, there's some reassurance there. Children in care numbers, these aren't on track, it's in, in, in terms of the number, we have seen, you know, we, we set again, an ambitious target, I think there's something about targets being realistic on this or think about that for our next approach, but next year's sort of targets. But we are over on that, if you just go to the next slide. But yesterday, the government, we have to do this return called the 903 return, which is an annual return, every year about, every child who's, with children's services work with. One of the things that, this was published yesterday, if you, you can just see that actually in terms of number of children in care, it is actually, you know, it's actually really improved from our rate overall. So Warwickshire's rate was 69% per 10,000, it's gone down to 63.5. And if you look underneath that, you can see that there's been significant rises in our stat neighbours. In the West Midlands, it's like 90 and England it's 71. So we, we perform better than our stat neighbours, West Midlands and England in relation to that. So again, if I had a graph which I could show you, which is on our region, on the regional data, Warwickshire's growth is very, very tiny, it's something like 0.3% of children coming into care. We are keeping children out of care is the key message. But compared to other local authorities, particularly our stat neighbours, they're seeing significant growth in their looked-after populations, not something that we are experiencing here. So it's not where we want it to be, we'd want it, we remain ambitious, but we are performing better than, I would say, not much most, but we are performing better than our stat neighbours on that. I think if, I don't think, I think just going, I don't think there's anything else on the public health measures in particular we're going to mention. If you go, so then I think, I think that's it, the next slide, the last one. I think it's just showing you the Integrated Delivery Plan that is on there. Again, it's quite detailed on the Integrated Delivery Plan, it's, you know, 63, 67 things are on target, you've got, there are 13 things that are compromised, there's some explanation in the report around that and I can take any specific questions rather than picking any out. So that was just a bit of a summary, Chair and Vice Chair, Chair, and asking you, I guess, ask any questions and see if we can help.
Thank you, John. Thanks. That was really helpful. I've got a couple of questions on child protection and the stats there. A lower number of children in Warwickshire that have been identified isn't always a good thing. Sometimes it can mean, I'm not saying this is the case, you know, but sometimes it means they've just not been spotted. So can you just assure us of what the check and balance is so that we can say definitely we know it's not because children have gone through the net?
So child protection, as you know, we can never say never and you only know what you know in terms of our children. But I think we've got a very robust child protection system in place in Warwickshire. And I think in terms of the check and balances, we, every quarter, we do a thematic audit. We now do those with other agencies as well, with police and health colleagues. So we're challenging each other about the decisions we're making about child protection. And what we do is we look at the children that we have, there's been a multi-agency decision that they don't need a child protection plan. And we look at those to say, are they proportionate and right? Was that the right decision? And we also look at the children that we made a decision, that we have made, that we've intervened in their family life, we have made them subject to a child protection plan. And was that the right decision? And the feedback and the analysis of that is that we get those decisions right. There's always one or two where, you know, there's a debate and a discussion and quite rightly so. But those tend to be ones where we've made the child protection plan and, you know, are we over intervening? Have we intervened? Could we have intervened slightly earlier? Could we have intervened too early? Those debates do go on. But overall, I think you can be assured that we've got a robust process in place around those things.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It's kind of carrying on from councillor Brown's question, actually. It's sort of, it's a bit of a weird one, isn't it? Having targets for child protection plans and children in care because you don't want to kind of, it's almost better to miss the target and make sure you've got all the children in the right place than to worry about hitting a target. So it's just sort of a, yeah, a reassurance that actually whilst we have a target, it's definitely not one of those factors that drives what we do. And I would much rather we miss that target and had all the children protected or in care that needed to be rather than, well, we've got a green box for a change. So I'm sure that's what you do. But again, it's just having that reassurance that, yeah, it's a target, but not one that we really want to have in a way.
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult. I mean, I guess the, absolutely, it's a real balance. And I think that's what I'm trying to get across. And I think that there is a balance in the sense that equally, what you don't want is you don't want, we want to be proportionate. We don't want to over intervene. We certainly don't want to see the numbers of children coming into care like we've had in other local authorities perhaps experiencing. It's not necessarily the best thing for children because if we can keep them in their family or keep them with their extended family, that's what we want to see. And I think when you look at, it is looking at it a bit more of a systemic approach. So I think, you know, one of the things in Warwickshire is that what we're really getting really good at is helping families to be able to care for children and getting real support in place for parents. But where parents can't make the changes to safely care for a child, that we're looking at aunts, uncles, grandparents, friends, relatives, dance teachers, associated, connected others to care for those children so they stay in their community. And now forty per cent of children in care are actually with those sort of kinship care arrangements. And that's a positive thing overall. So, and it tends to be those children can then move, can stay within their community and actually don't necessarily need to be, have involvement from the local authority or from the state around that. They need our support and they get it. But, yeah, so I think you're right. It is a difficult one. If you could colour code it differently, it would probably be amber rather than red at least. So, or maybe a lighter, a darker light of green or something. But I think you're right. So I can, yeah, we can reassure you. I think the key message from me would be the children need protecting are being protected, the children that need to be in care are in care. But we're not seeing huge, you know, the support we've got in place to keep children out of care is working.
So is the reason that we're doing better with our children in care than the people that are around us, the authorities around us, is that because we have kept our early help facility and they have got rid of theirs?
Yes, I would say. I mean, I think you're right. I think absolutely. I think, you know, lots of local authorities have kind of needed to make difficult decisions and have stopped investing in prevention. We're not doing that in Warwickshire and I think we're seeing the results of that. If anything, you know, when I've been in this job now for six years next week, it feels like about sixty, but there we go. In that time, Nigel and I talked about this a lot. In that time, we've seen the number of children who are open to early help was about two thousand, just over two thousand today. Sorry, it was just over one thousand six hundred children, so just under two thousand. Today, it's three thousand two hundred children are open to early help. So we've seen a twenty per cent rise just in the last twelve months of early help support. So I do think that making that shift to get support earlier to families is exactly what we need to do and we're seeing the results of that.
Just following on from that point really, in a way, because on page thirty-three of the report talks about the challenges in delivering our child-friendly Warwickshire strategy and also the targets and the particular challenge. I just, whether you wanted to explain a little bit more about that paragraph? Because I mean, it's quite clearly that there's challenges coming down the line in delivering. It does link to the previous discussion, does it?
So, I mean, overall, I think that overall, all children's services across the country, are generally seeing a rise in demand or needs of children in their locality. And I think certainly, you know, the things that seem to jump out to me around that is around issues around domestic abuse, homelessness and, you know, are two major issues for us really. And children with mental health and more, you know, complex needs really. So that's why we're seeing a rise in child in need numbers overall. But Warwickshire's always been, I guess, the threshold for support in Warwickshire is probably less than some of our other statistical neighbours and others. We do want to make sure we provide that support to them. So, yeah, that is a pressure. But I think when we compare ourselves to other local authorities, our stat neighbours, the rises they're seeing in these areas, child in need, child protection, children in care are not just, some of them are fractionally larger, most of them are significantly larger. So I think, you know, our services are under pressure, but they are coping under that. We've had, Children and Family Services has had probably one of the biggest amounts of investment over the last sort of five years than the other service in the organisation, I would suggest. And we are seeing the results of that. We've got the, you know, the family support workers and the social workers are managing that. Their caseloads are safe and manageable still. Equally, our early help, from an early help perspective, we've got excellent work going on, particularly in our schools, supporting those children and really good relationships with schools, providing early help, not something that other local authorities actually experience as well. So, yes, there are always pressures and demands, but we are managing to manage that safely, I think.
Well, there probably is, but being Chair, I'm told that is it. That's the downside, isn't it? Is there any other, any other questions?
Yes, me.
Oh, sorry, Barbara.
Thank you. Sorry, it's going back to the undertoes and provision there. It's disappointing to see that the uptake in Warwickshire is low. Where are we targeting our investigation? Sounds a bit hardline, but where are we looking closely at why that's happening? And given that the resource for that kind of investigation is pretty small, I would think, how are we deciding where it's best to put our energies? Because, you know, you said yourself, the payoff for early intervention is immense, isn't it?
Yeah, so the Department of Education actually provide us with a list of children in our area who they think are eligible for this. So we, and from our data sources as well, will be knowing who those parents are and we directly contact them. We'll become, the Family Information Service calls them, emails them, texts them, letting them know this is available, you know, do you want to take that up or not? Most of the people who don't take it up, it's their choice. They, you know, they've made a decision, they're going to stay off work and they're going to care for their child. And I guess the other element from my perspective is making sure we really target the most vulnerable families and making sure those two-year-olds are taking up the provision. So we've got sort of campaigns around with social workers, letting them know, you know, or family support workers, say, health visitors and others saying, look, these are the families we really need to support into there. What can we do to get them there? And I guess some of those families may be a little bit more chaotic and it's difficult because they've got lots of other things going on. So it is about, you know, the family support worker, the social worker, helping them to make sure they get into that local nursery and go there regularly. So there is proactive support going on across the services, a right to target those particular families. And that's how we got it, you know, I think if we looked at this, I think it was probably twelve months, eighteen months ago, the figure was about sixty-two per cent. So through that sort of real targeting, we have been able to get it up to where we need it, to where it is now, but we need to go further. And in Warwickshire, I think it has been sort of eighty, ninety per cent in the past and that's where we want it to be again.
Thank you, John. So there's a lot of partnership work in between services. Thank you.
I've got several, so I'll just do a few and then maybe give it a rest. Just on, in the report, one point nine, some of the risks, we aren't able to keep children and adults safe. I mean, it's a big thing to say that's still a risk and I think it's been a risk for a long time. So, I mean, what, what can you say about that? Or somebody?
Yeah, I can, I will. So I think in terms of our risk register, it will always be on there about their keeping children and adults safe. I think that, you know, when you look at any of the serious cases that have occurred across the country, they, you know, there's a number of issues and patterns around that. So you can never say never. We'd be absolutely silly to say that in terms of that risk. What we have done, the risk register scores the level of risk. And actually, that score has reduced over the last sort of twelve months. We made the decision that would reduce it partly because of the things that I've talked about already, that, you know, we can be more assured that the children that we need to work with, we know about. We've got those strong partnerships, we've got a good children's services, but we cannot, we will never be complacent around those things. So if you like, over the last sort of few years, the risk around those, those serious incidents has reduced, but it will never unfortunately be taken away.
Great. Well, I'll probably get round to the point when I stop asking that every time these reports come through. Because I'll remember what you said last time. So there's another one. And this might be, this is about the send inspection report statement we're unable to put out. Am I correct in that? It might be answered later, but I don't think I saw it in the next report about send. That's one of the risks, right?
If I respond to that.
It's not in the next report, but I'll answer that in my introduction to the next item. If you like, I've got some stuff about the written statement of action which was in the performance report. It's probably best all wrapped up into that. Is that all right with us?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And sending mainstream schools. So five point three, which is page eight of ten or something, essentially saying we haven't got enough, enough people. I know you've talked about that and about caseloads. But, I mean, have we got a long, a long term? Is it, just aren't the social workers out there apparently? I mean, what is the, are we safe in the long term? We may be coping, but what's the long term plan?
Yeah, I mean, I guess there's a national sort of issue around social workers and there's a new, sorry, there's a, yeah, there's a national strategy about getting more social workers and getting them to the right level and making sure that we keep them for longer, particularly on the front line, things around child protection and sort of court work and wanting to work in those areas. So Warwickshire have got a number of different things we're doing around that. We've got a grow your own programme. We've just got nineteen, actually eighteen people that are on an apprenticeship to become a social worker. We'll have another twenty this year, twenty after that. So we are support, we are doing everything we can to grow our own around it. The issue and the statement around that really is about, we've got an increase in agency social workers in our child protection and initial response teams. We've got, the social workers that we do have don't want to do that work because it's difficult, it's stressful, it is, has a particular, you know, it's a particular sort of skillset to maintain doing child protection work in over a number of years. So we've got a really good wellbeing policy around that and counselling support for people and they're really benefiting from that. And we're also about to launch a campaign around market supplements around that as well, for those some really hard to recruit posts with the aim of reducing the number of agency staff. So I'll send a bit more of a briefing around that to members when, in the next few weeks.
Thank you. I've got two more I can actually figure out. One is, it's an appendix one, about the number, percentage of care leavers in education, employment or training is really low, really, really low. So why and, you know, what are they doing?
So earlier on, I talked about that forty per cent of our US, forty per cent of our care leavers are US children. And so they tend to be doing very more short-term courses around, you know, developing their language skills and other things. So that skews some of our figures, just to be aware of that. So what we're doing about that is that we have, we're launching with a local, with a college, our own courses for our US children to make sure that throughout the whole twelve months period, they are in education, rather than doing these sort of smaller language courses that tend to be like one term or, and then you have three months where you're not doing anything particularly. So we're making sure that they are in college constantly, which will help us, I think, in those figures. There has been, when you take the US children out, there has still been a decline in our care leavers and their, them attending education employment. We've got a number of things that we're doing around that and trying to understand it. Some of it is about, if you like, the cohort of children that we're working, the young people we're working with in that age bracket now. So what we take, when you break it down, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, there's been a decline in their attending education employment. And that's because of the individual circumstances of some of those young people, you know, they're in hospital, they've got mental health problems, there may be some other things. But we, you know, there is a wraparound support to get them into employment or college. What we've seen is in terms of the older age bracket of eighteen, nineteen-year-olds is actually, there's been an increase in, more of them are in education and employment. So there's been an improvement there. So it's a bit of a mixed picture, but it's definitely one that we are absolutely focused on and wanting to improve. It's one of the key areas that we want to improve over the next twelve months.
Thank you. Okay. And my last one, and this is on the overspend, which you may have mentioned, page seven. There's a lot of talk about, there's a plan in place, but it's a very large overspend. I know we've got overspends in send. I don't have something to do with that or if this plan and all these senior people being tasked with doing it, but there's no actual answers in this report about it, I don't think.
So I can talk about my overspend and I'll get, John, you can talk about the education overspend. So insert that the overspend in the Children and Family Service is significant. We're currently projecting, I think, in total, it'll be just under fifteen million pound overspend in children or families. That, that's like, because this is about quarter two, it's kind of the latest picture is that. Of that fifteen million pounds, the overs, six million pound is staffing. So that's predominantly about agency social workers and the additional cost of agency social workers. So it goes back to the point that was making before, that we don't just need to attract and keep more permanent social workers in the child protection teams because of, you know, stability, et cetera, but also because of the cost of that. The majority of the overspend is relation to the cost of placements, which I know we've talked about in previous committees. And I can, the cost, the unit cost of a residential placement has increased constantly, even, you know, from the figures we've just updated from January, the unit cost has increased even just from September. even just from September by another kind of three, four hundred pound a week. Um so that is a real pressure for us, um and that's why we come back to the fact that we need to open our own children's homes, um because it is not just better for those children, but it's cheaper for us as a county council as well to run our own. So um yeah, that those are the two main pressures. There is a financial plan in place, financial um to try it, to make sure, number one, that we deliver the savings uh that are identified, that we confirm by council in in a few weeks' time, uh but secondly, that we don't, uh that we manage this this situation and particularly, you know, get, we need to open our own children's homes and uh and fill those homes, and that's our number one priority financially and for our children. I don't know whether, uh Johnny or Nigel want to add anything about?
I I can say something about, so first of all, I'd separate the two things out. The education, the council's education budget isn't overspent, it's it's currently underspent, um very, very slightly by a tiny amount, so so we'll call it on budget. Um in terms of send, the the pressure is is very significant. Um I think the figures reported to cabinet on Tuesday were seventeen and a half million pound predicted overspend. I think the difference between send and and children and families is that we don't set the budget, we are given a set amount of money to spend for children who have uh education health and care plans through the dedicated schools grant. Over the last five years, that's risen by around fifty three percent, and I I I often say in any other era, we would be singing the praises of the Department for Education of Government for the level of increase that we that we've received. However, what we also know is over the last five years, the demand in those services, the number of children being assessed, being issued with education health care plans, has also risen by just over fifty percent. So actually, if you look at the costs of an education healthcare plan, five years ago, the average cost per healthcare pla- education healthcare plan was around sixteen thousand pounds per child. Today, five years later, it is still around sixteen thousand pounds per child. So that I think roughly twenty six, twenty seven percent inflation over that period has all had to be absorbed internally, and that's why the situation is is as it is. And I think, you know, any more detail around that probably is in Ross's report and we'll we'll come to talk about.
So I think we're sort of wrapping this bit up, which is the performance indicators and performance report. We've considered it, made comments, which have been made in, um is everybody happy with the report as it's been presented, apart from John, who wants to see Fifty Shades of Red or Yem Amber or something? Along that side, and 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 there are quite a lot of comments which are going to come into the next report, which I think we're gonna gonna pick up. And and within that, I'm not sure whether the government announcement made yesterday, whether there's any little bit more details around that, which Nigel may be able to allude to from the money that's been now been allocated. And so what I do know also from yesterday is actually on on all the home placements and everything else that the government, DLOK and everything, it's more and more information because they're actually making a table up of who's actually charging more in which parts of the country and what's going on um a- 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 as well. Okay, everybody happy with that? Madam?
Hello, everybody. I can only really apologize, it's taken me over two and a half hours to get here because of I've been not involved, but I've had to reverse from four accidents on the way. So I've seen scenery I've never seen before. Um so I'd just like to thank councillor Roethlisberger for stepping up for me, and I hope I can take over in the glamorous way he has. So we've just got to do the recommendation now.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which means I can ask all my questions.
Give me a minute. So I go to the recommendation now?
Yep.
Okay, so the recommendation is that committee considers the comments of the quarter two, twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty four, organisational performance and progress against the integrated delivery plan, management and financial, finances and risk. Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I missed it, John. I will listen to everything that goes on on the debate. Right, so we'll go on to children and young people, agenda item, oh, send.
Six.
Six, agenda number six. Send analysis. And that's by Ross Caws, please.
Thank you, councillor Humphrey. So Ross Caws, head of S- S- Seddon Inclusion, I feel we've been building up to this now, given some some of the comments on the previous item. Um this has been, uh I I think we've been overdue to come and report back to overview scrutiny on send. As you can see, there's been other developments which have almost been overtaking each other over over the last year, and this felt like the moment to come back to you um regarding both, there's a consultation exercise that took part, that we took, uh that took place last year, but we've also been taking part in something called a delivering better value programme. Um if if I briefly kind of present the report, um firstly, we 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 outline uh the the outcomes, uh which across the our population of children and people's special needs and disabilities is are broadly positive in terms of when we look at their attainment and their progress and at post sixteen, their engagement in uh in in education, employment and training. There are some issues, as we highlight there, regarding attendance and permanent exclusions o- over the last year. That's the 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 outcomes. We we we've been part, as I said, of a programme called Delivering Better Value. So this is a programme which the Department for Education asked us to be part part of, along with fifty five other local authorities. We were asked to be part of it due to our uh a consistent overspend on on the high needs block. Uh this, I I guess, saying that fifty five local authorities are part of that scheme shows that we are not alone in that, and there's a third, further thirty four, I think, in a safety valve programme, which is a slightly different programme but for the same reason. So we're looking at over eighty local authorities uh being being supported in some way. It's been a really helpful programme to go through because, uh both, I think, locally and then nationally, as it's provided a standardised methodology in terms of, so the Department for Education, we're hearing back from lots of of uh of of different local authorities about overspends and the reason for that, and this is providing evidence to show a standardised methodology on, oh, where why where the overspend has come from, but also uh a forecast of future demand and future spend. As part of the the Delivering Better Value Programme, we've put in the report uh where those financial forecasts are going, and there are some very high amounts with it within there. This is part of the evidence going back to the Department for Education in terms of funding, and Nigel's already alluded to, actually, funding has increased, but also the caseload over that time has increased as uh as 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 well in terms of, uh so this this is reporting back to them. The reasons for those significant increases that you see on on the graphs are are not just an increase in caseload, but actually, as we fill our, we have different kind of costs associated with different types of placements. Broadly speaking, uh you have less spend in a in a mainstream school, when a child's put in a mainstream school, a a bit more in in a a one of our state special schools, and then it 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 doubles when you go to independent specialist provision. And what we are looking at is with the current rates of children moving into specialist provision, uh then actually we'll see exponential growth into the independent sector in terms of more placements in the independent sector, and what we've seen in the last year is more placements being made in our high cost independent sector as 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 well, shifting up the the uni- unit cost in that area. As a proposal to to mitigate uh where we are financially going forward, four projects have been proposed. Those projects have been submitted in a grant application to the Department for Education, and one of the things we're asking for today is for you to kind of to to endorse those. So the four that we we've proposed for the grant funding that will come as a result of this programme are uh what we call the inclusion frame- home framework, which is trying to support children uh without the need for an education health and care plan. So we call that uh SEN support in 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 schools. With, there's a second programme that we've entitled workforce de- development, which is about trying to maintain children with EHC plans in mainstream schools and try and build confidence both in uh parents but also school staff, uh in in their in their abilities to meet the needs of children in a mainstream setting. Our third programme is particularly about accelerating our resource provisions. So we've got a good track record over the last uh few years of investing in resource provisions. As a county, we didn't have any resource provisions in two thousand and fifteen. Resource provisions are in mainstream schools, but they are, they they have, they have dedicated uh places and support for children with EHC plans. Uh we we've moved that, we may have uh, we have, we have twenty three resource provisions and specialist partnerships in 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 total, uh but we want to accelerate that that further over the next five years in creating a kind of an extra layer of provision to support our children and and young people. And we found it increasingly popular as an understanding of what resource provision is, uh has grown across the the county. We found that increasingly popular. One of the issues that we have is at the moment, that is mainly in primary settings, so nineteen of those twenty three in primary settings, and actually we see a lot of our spend increase at secondary age. So establishing secondary resource provisions across the county is a particular priority for us going forward, and we see as a way of both meeting children's needs in the right place and also uh and and also managing the budget going forward as well. It's worth me saying that as part of Delivering Better Value, we weren't just looking at the data and the finances, we did, we did case reviews on independent children's ch- journeys, and on on one measure, we found that with a reasonably small uh sample, but we found fifty seven percent of children who are in special schools, we felt could have been supported in a resource provision, had it been available mainly of secondary age. The fourth one we're looking at is uh is about digital infra- infrastructure. Uh this is investing in our systems. We know one of the constant uh kind of frustrations within the system, the send system, uh isn't just the demand on the service, it's the communication within the service, and we think with some more investment in our digital in- infrastructure, we can improve that communication and productivity of our services as as well. So those are the four projects we wanted to do going forward. I should probably say at this point as well that uh we were encouraged to only have four projects, so that is not to the exclusion of other other projects. Um so for for example, discussions, we are probably expecting, maybe some questions about uh 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 early years, but we've just had some additional funding from early years, which we've put into another project, which sits outside delivering better value. But this is not to the exclusion of other pieces of work, but this is a particular focus piece of work funded by the Department for Ed- Education. Because of the, uh because of this piece of work and the proposals that we drew up as a result of that, uh we've been looking again, uh we, a consultation that we went out on for a send offer, a send core off- offer back in, uh started uh December twenty twenty two, finished in March twenty twenty three, suggesting a number of different uh activities that we could do and and commit to as part of a send off offer. Given uh the financial climate has has changed in terms of where we are with our current spend, given the evidence of delivering better value, uh the delivering better value programme and the proposals that have come out from that, our suggestion, our our recommendation that we put to to cabinet is that we don't go forward with the proposals that we had in that core offer, or to be more specific, we don't go forward with the new proposals. So that included eighteen things that we didn't have to do, but we thought were good things to to do, but they weren't statutory things to do. Eleven of those we do anyway, and we will continue to do those. There were seven new activities which we were proposing, which we are not proposing to take forward at in the way they were presented in the consultation. That said, elements of those, so you will have seen, within those was training for staff in schools, and that's been picked up as an example under our workforce de- development programme. So some of this uh is, uh there's there's a caution about com- com- committing to things when we are so close in the budget, to things that we won't be afforded in the future, but equally, I think we we also, we see across the send system a need to invest in our mainstream schools and our mainstream staff. That was the purpose of the consultation, and that 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 uh that thought and approach remains in our projects proposed through the Delivering Better Value Programme. Uh just to pick up on the point regarding the written statement of of action, so there's probably kind of two bits to to report on here. The written statement of action itself, so this came from our inspection uh back in uh twenty twenty one, uh and we've we've been monitored, there were five areas that we asked to to progress on, and we also had actions uh reg- 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 regarding those. Uh we've been meeting with the Department for Education regularly. We were the last local area to be inspected under the previous inspection framework. As a result, every other local area who's inspected under the previous inspection framework were then re-inspected under the same framework to sign off and kind of end the written statement of action phase. What Department for Education have said to us is, because we are now progressed onto a new inspection framework, they don't believe it would be helpful to be, have a short re-inspection under the old framework. So they are waiting for us essentially to be inspected under the new framework before they sign it off. They have agreed that we have made good progress on all areas outlined in the previous written statement of action, but they don't feel they can close it until actually that new inspection happens, and that could be at any point within the next five years. Uh that's down to Ofsted, not down to the Department for Education. Um but they've assured us, and we meet, we're meeting terminally with them, of good progress, and we're actually, we're working with them to actually uh look, look again at the focus of the meetings that we're having in those monitoring meetings with the Department for Education, as some of the new issues have emerged as well. So that, so we're keeping that that m- m- monitoring going in terms of that work. Uh the last thing to say, and one of the actions from the written statement of action was regarding this core offer that we proposed in the consultation, and that's why that appears as read in compromise, because uh in in the in the view of officers, we feel the Delivering Better Value Programme has overtaken what was in the consultation. I think, I'm just going to check with, I think that probably covers all the points uh that wanted to 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 present. There's more information in here, there is far more evidence that supported our application. Uh there's there's seventy eight slides worth for anyone who wants to to see that, but obviously happy to take uh questions on on the on the report.
Thank you very much, Russ. That was a very comprehensive report. Um have we got anybody that wishes to, um, right?
Well, we can leave, if I won't ask about the uh the inspection statement and not being able to write it up or whatever it is, but if you could um do that when you answer councillor Roethlisberger's question later on, that would be, that'd be useful. I just don't understand what what the terminology is behind that. But in general, sorry, I'm going to speak into my mic. Um hello. So about money and the the um resource provision, uh which sounds brilliant, getting getting kids out of special provision into mainstream schools where where that's appropriate and possible is obviously good um and cheaper. Um at the end of twenty twenty eight, we're still forecast with with a with huge, you know, costs. Um is this special provision, uh and everything we're doing, getting as many, is that, is it aiming to get every every kid who can be in a mainstream school, in a mainstream school, and anyone who needs to be in a special provision? Okay, fine. So that's the one question, are we aiming it like kind of nearly a hundred percent? Uh and presumably we get paid for, you know, not enough, for our our special provision school places, and probably we don't get paid for um the resourced provision in mainstream. Um but is there a, is it still worthwhile financially, not morally, but financially doing that?
Um so if I respond to that, let me respond to the resource vision first, and then I'll come back to the overall forecast following that. So the resource vision, I I I think it's really important that we say where appropriate. Okay, so there will still be children as we go forward who require a specialist placement, and this is not, this is not to uh avoid that. Indeed, we are expanding Evergreen School and Oakwood School, uh the what the the Warwickshire Academy, which we opened uh now two years ago, but we have expanded our specialist provision, and prior to that, five years prior to that, we expanded a number of our special schools prior to that as well. So we do recognise a need for increased specialist provision, and if we look at the 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 data, uh we are, we're just above the averages in terms of the number of children who are in specialist provision with the EHC plan. So uh we are always in a dilemma of do we commission more specialist provision because there's demand for it, or do we look at the data, it's saying that actually we place more in specialist provision than elsewhere? Is there something else we need to do? Now, that's why we've come to the conclusion that resource provision is that level of of support that we need to to really invest in and accelerate now. I guess what's different to 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 what we've done previously is previously, we've perhaps been less direct in 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 terms of identifying in, in, in terms of identifying schools and saying we would like to be a resource provision. We've gone out to areas and said who would like to be, and generally it's primary schools that have come back. And so we're, we're doing reasonably well in that area, but we're seeing a lot of demand at secondary. And I think there's also, we need, we, we kind of need schools to collaborate in hosting it. So we can't, we can't instruct a school to host resource provision. And there is a certain, uh, vulnerability for an individual school to come forward and say, we will host a resource provision if they then feel that they become, uh, the school that ev- every family would send, but then wants to send their child to. So we've been talking to areas of schools saying, we want to do this, you can see the si- si- situation. We would love to set up resource provisions, but why don't we do that? If, if, if three or four or five of you set up a resource provision, then actually it kind of, we're doing it as a group. And there's not that kind of com- competition or, or kind of favouritism between schools. So that's the approach we're taking particularly with secondary schools, and that's the tier that we're missing. We think that that will lead to more appropriate placements. Um, but in, and it will be financially advantageous as well, so we think there are, there are some win-wins through that. In terms of the funding that we get, we, the funding that we get is one large high need block, which is for us to commission based on all the individual decisions that we make. Um, in, in terms of, so every decision made about a child placed in, in resource provision or specialist provision or independent specialist provision goes before a panel and individual decisions are made, but it all comes out of that same pot, essentially. Uh, the only difference is in a mainstream school, schools are meant to contribute the first six thousand pounds. And as Nigel kind of alluded to, uh, earlier, six thousand pounds in two thousand and fourteen doesn't buy what it buys in twenty twenty four. So that's another pressure on the system. In terms of where we go in the future, obviously, no, the, the clear thing is this, this doesn't balance still in, in the future. There is still a cumulative deficit. Uh, and that's where at the moment, we, we, we need to show as local authority, we are doing everything we can as a local system to mitigate where we can, what that forecast looks like, uh, and, and have everything in, in place that is reasonably expected of us. Uh, we are not the only local area in, in this scheme that is forecasting, that, that is unable to balance the budget. I think I referenced in the report, uh, some of the largest local authorities have up to five hundred and sixty million cumulative deficit that they're forecasting as a result of this. Uh, that, that's down to information that's been gleaned through feeding information requests and reported in some of the kind of the education press. Uh, so there are still very active conversations going on with the Department for Education about where this leaves us in five years' time and what funding looks like.
Just one follow-up. So say twenty twenty eight, are, are we aiming to have, I appreciate what you've said. Are we aiming to have everyone in the appropriate education setting?
Yes, there's, there's a shorthand to that, so that, that's where we need to move to. We're not planning on moving any children out of schools of where they are now, but going forward, every, every placement, if we have more options of where to place children, we feel we can have more appropriate settings going forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Hamersley.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer all, all my questions here or queries, but we'll give it a try. Uh, because there's some eye-watering figures here to do with people and money. Uh, and I just, i- if I can ask some basic questions, I mean, fifteen and a half thousand people on E H C P send seventeen point four percent of the school population. That's, that, that's a lot. Uh, from birth to twenty five is nearly six thousand. An increase of thirty seven percent over the last five years, that's pretty astounding to me. Uh, and does anyone know why this is increasing so rapidly, these figures? Is it something in the water? I, I don't know, why are there so many people now jumping out with these needs? Where were they in the past when I was at school? I never heard of send, what it's, you know, it was all, it was whatever. But this, this then creates a problem of money. It all comes down to money. I mean, an overspend to cover this is seventeen and a half million out of ninety five point three. And the overspend for twenty three, twenty four forecast is thirty two and a half million. Uh, this is not affordable to W C C, and it's not affordable to other councils with similar things. So although we are obligated to supply this cover for the needs of these people, uh, it appears to be a bottomless pit and a hole that we're throwing loads of money into. Uh, that the council has little to no control over, over these costs. So although the government recently has said that they're going to put more money into this, they have been badgered by MPs, et cetera, et cetera. Will it be enough? Will we get enough? Will other authorities get enough? But my question is, do we go back to find the source of the problem? Is why there's so many people being, uh, having this badge of send and special needs? The problem appears, appears to me to be, why are so many people now having all these issues? Where very little when I was at school with these special needs. I know that was so long ago, like just about remember. But again, to stop this spend, fix the problem at source. So I don't know how you can answer this, but probably not.
I'll attempt to do so, but we could spend a whole session doing so, and there's, there's many views, uh, on that. And, and I think we, we referenced, there was, there was a report that came to, uh, Audit and Standards Committee as well, where there was a bit more description regarding that. Ju- just to be clear, the, the fifteen thousand figure are both those who are on, uh, what we call send support and with E H C plans. So the E H C plans are the ones which the local authority are financially, uh, financially providing resources for. Uh, and, and, and there are legal obligations too. So, uh, that, 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 there, there's eleven or twelve thousand chi- children who are in our schools with special educational needs. Actually, the local authority, uh, don't financially support, and schools use their own resources to, to do so. But, but the point remains, there is an increase in that need. So the numbers of send support have been going up as well as the numbers of children with E H C plans. Partly that's due, there is increased need, there is increased need, and there's increased understanding of needs. So, you know, there are increased rates of diagnosis of children with autism, there's increased understanding of mental health conditions, there's increased su- su- survival of children, uh, with conditions, uh, at, at, at birth. So there are, there are many good reasons for that in terms of understanding of needs and what those are. There's also on top of that, we have to look at how, how are we meeting those needs early in terms of early identification, yeah, early identification and early intervention? And are needs escalating because the right support isn't being put in place at the right time? And I guess you heard John speak earlier about early help, which is something that as a council, we have control over the early help teams. Send support is, uh, is, is over our two hundred and forty schools, uh, in, in terms of the different workforce across those schools, which is why we talk about how, where does the local authority intervene in terms of kind of, uh, in- increasing the confidence and the skills of, of the workforce across our schools? And some of the issues we have actually are about, in terms of we have, uh, and always have to stress this, some, so, some excellent schools who are really inclusive and do that early identification and, and do the early in- intervention. But we, our views, we're not consistent with that ac- 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 across our, our, our schools. So part of this is a quality element in terms of the services that actually young people receive as well, so that can then escalate to produce a, an, an increased level of need that perhaps, uh, with some early intervention, early identification could have been addressed earlier. And that's, that's across essentially two hundred and forty organisations as well as support services that work with those schools.
Councillor Ruudhaus.
Thank you. Um, number of points really, partly leads on from what Brian started as well. Um, there's something about the narrative around the whole of this, and you've heard me talk about this before, that where does it start and where do we go to? So I suppose it would have been quite nice in a way, within the report and the analysis, to have some sort of graph or something which shows us something from, if you like, conception or those very really early years that goes, goes through. And, and the trajectory I know will just be through the roof and going off up there. And therefore, that sort of begs to me, is, is the question, and I've been speaking to quite a lot of people about this, the narrative around this is about greater awareness, even like the diagnosis. A lot of families and parents want a diagnosis and all, they want something to actually, to, to, to grasp. And, and therefore the, the numbers or demand will never decrease. There'll always be an increase in demand, and it's about how we manage that de- demand and manage that going through, which is from the early years, from that side of the rim to this side of the rim. Um, but there's a corporate position around this, which I think something probably for cabinet to discuss. Yeah, what is the corporate, the corporate feel around this, has the corporate element of this work between, from public health to, to everything else? Um, and I suppose one example of that is, quite recently, I went to a, a nursery in Rugby, which is at the family centre. Uh, and it was full, uh, parents and people in there. Um, and, uh, I was expecting it to be a lot of parents from around Rugby, all fairly close. Actually, most of them came from villages, so from Pissborough or from Ryanair Dunsborough or from elsewhere, where there was absolutely no provision for, for, for that element around nurse revision, revision and support. And then when you actually speak to the parents, and I thought, oh, this all sounds familiar, have to tell my story twice or three times. It's the same stuff coming back again, that I have to do this or I have to do that again. And it just seems to me that there's something not right about communication. So I suppose point one is around that corporate and the narrative, do we actually, recognising it's the education bit and early years. But is there something actually about the narrative we need to change as a local authority to actually look at this in a more holistic, um, appro- approach? As to the four projects, that's fine, but it's only one year funding. I don't know what the exit plan is, not quite sure what the real, real, while there is some performance in there, but not really sure what the key performance indicators are. You know, fine, let's do it, you know, let's see what happens. Um, but it's, yeah, uh, one, one year funding. So that, that causes, um, for, for me, particular issues, because how do you get that really embedded into? I suppose coming back to this point, like yesterday, the money that, that the government announced, you know, when he washed the sides of what's been talked about in this report. You know, what do we get, Nigel's about two million or something, something like that? Is it a bit more, but I mean, you know, doesn't even, doesn't even touch the sides. And as a local authority, we're, we're, we're in a slightly better position than, than quite a lot of others that I know that are tutoring on, on the edge as well. So I, and the written statement of action, I've heard what you, you've said about that, but also within the performance indicators and everything else and the performance report it talks about, unable to do that. So we've just got to wait until we have the next inspection, um, around that before we actually manage that. And I suppose it could have said that in the performance report to, to, to understand that. So it's, it's more of a commentary, but within that, you'll be able to pick the bones out of how we're going to. Otherwise, I just see it sitting here and next year, if you like, you'll be across this side of the room talking about all your stuff. John will be across that side of the room talking about all your stuff. The health system's not even in the room, I don't think, is it? Um, or other partners are not even in the room. And, and, you know, for those who were on the County Council Network call yesterday, would have heard the Labour Shadow spokesman for local government talk about one pot of money, partnership, working together and delivery, and that's it. You ain't going to get a load of extra money coming in. But what they were clearly looking at, and I know the government's revisiting this, is actually, is that one, that one system rather than the one-off and grants and the rest of it, and you have to keep chasing money. End of my ramble.
Um, so, so I respond to, uh, on, on the written statement of action point, just as I, I think there might be something presentationally to discuss. Because I think, I think there were six actions that we were reporting back to you. I think five of them have been green, which haven't been reported back because they've been doing well. Then that one was about the particular kind of the, the, the consultation, which is why that one was red, because we haven't essentially agreed yet uh, that the proposal is that the delivering better value kind of supersedes what we looked at in the consultation. So that's why that one was, uh, red, and I, I take the point in terms of being, being clear about that, that that isn't clear in the, in the presentation. Um, I, I met recently with a, uh, with, with a nursery school uh, head who was, who was sharing her experience in, in, in terms of the needs she was seeing coming through, but also uh, uh, her, her, her insistence on making sure that she, she, that, that the parents came in for kind of a, a parenting discussion every term as a condition of actually being at school and how to meet certain needs. And I think certainly just even in the few months that we've, well, it's, it's been more than a few months now in terms of, um, uh, us working as education and children's families, we've been coming together to look at, uh, how do our systems overlap? I know my, my colleague Leah has actually been leading on that in terms of, uh, uh, early years. You, you're right in saying, how do those services pull together? I know we've been saying that for a, a, a number of years, but I think with, this, this is seeing the pinch, pinch point, this is seeing it at the top. And as I said, we've used early, we've had extra money through from our early years block that we're investing particularly in our, our send support service to our early years. But, but certainly we're, we're seeing those links between parenting, early years and, 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 and nursery and the send support that we've put, put in, and that's really part of early, early identification, early identification. Nigel, I'm not sure we're able to.
There were two things I was going to add on account of what either of them were. So, so I suppose the first one is in terms of partnership working. Um, so we have now, um, a, a send partnership board, a strategic board from across the local authority and health that brings together all the key players with their responsibilities. And it involves people like those responsible for health visiting, those responsible for, for O T, um, and delivery grounds. It involves, uh, and it's jointly chaired, so I chair it collect with the chief nurse from the I C V. So it is, the ownership of the send system, if you like, i- i- is collective rather than single. That has been working for a, a few months. It, it worked, it worked over a couple of years around the written statement of action. We had a collaborative group, we've tried to move on from that to a strategic group that gets all the key players in the room and brings that. So, so the development of a, an agreed shared self-evaluation around the system, an agreed shared strategy for the system, and agreed shared action plan to develop and, and to meet the needs. It is all much further forward than I can remember previously. That doesn't mean it solved all the problems, but, but there is definitely a shared will and a shared engagement in order to address, uh, the challenges. And it has definitely had an impact on the areas highlighted in the written statement of action. Uh, and that's why, you know, most of that, well, those areas are, we think are ready to be signed off now, if you like. Um, so, so that was one of the things I would do. The point about funding, I, I think it is absolutely the case, there is only funding for one year to support the, um, uh, the Delivering Better Value Action Plan. That is around capacity building and, and to make the changes. I, I think the challenge with that is the stuff around supporting maintained schools, because those are the bits, the training programmes, the other elements, the inclusion part. Those are the bits we would want to run beyond the one year, definitely. In terms of the resource provision, the issue around funding is different, it's capital. So, so once a resource provision is open, actually, the high needs block pays for it in the way that, that Ross has described earlier. It's about moving how you spend that money, and it's better to spend it on resource provision than on, for example, independent special school if that meets the child's needs. So, so it is, the revenue funding for that is not such an issue. Um, the challenge is, we think it'll cost about twenty five million pounds in capital terms to, to build the provisions we need. So it's getting that funding in place, and it's about using some of the grant funding this year for the setup costs and those kind of things. Uh, so that's where we are. The final thing I was going to say is, we will have in the, in the revised, refreshed, whatever it's called, council plan, uh, a single, um, element which is around early years provision, which will involve education, health and, um, social care elements, uh, as one thing with a set of metrics and performance metrics that you'll be able to measure looking at how that's working collectively. Because we are absolutely clear that, that, you know, there, there are a lot of players in the early years, Mark, if you like. And we've got to make sure that they come together and work together. Um, so, so people like Marina from an education point of view, and, and Matt Biggs from an, uh, an early years efficiency point of view, Marina from an early help point of view, are all working together across that, along with health colleagues. And the one thing I will say is, and Ross will correct me if I'm wrong, is actually we do quite well in terms of early identification. So the numbers of children we identify with, um, N E H C P in the, in the nought to five bracket, we are a bit of a national outlier, we have, and we identify more, we find more than, than most do. And I think that's got to be a good thing, because if we can get there, intervene early, do the things we need to do, that will absolutely make the most difference going forward.
Yeah, come on, which is just a supplementary really, um, because I had to chair the beginning of the meeting, so I had to keep quiet. And it, it, it's just coming back to that narrative point, so what Nigel has said, and what you've both said, really, I, I would have found it really helpful in the beginning of the report to flesh that out, actually, because it sort of just reads more as a wop down into this one area. So actually to start understanding that, I think as elected members, would be, would be really helpful. And the last point in, um, is it?
The last point is about attendance and whether you wanted to, and exclusions, and whether you wanted to make any commentary around that paragraph in the report.
I think, so we're looking at that, so we're moving from the Centre for Inclusion Change Programme to become an education transformation programme, so that the million pounds that we, we haven't, DFE haven't confirmed, but we don't think they've turned anyone down yet for that funding, so we're assuming that's coming in. But essentially, the council have given us funding for Transformation Fund on SEND, and in the Audit Committee report, I kind of identified the difference that I've made then. In terms of attendance and exclusions, this isn't just a SEND issue, again, you see the impact on children with SEND in terms of being above average on those markers, but there's also concerns for those who don't have SEND and don't have EHC plans. So those are things that we are looking at in terms of a wider education transformation programme, and how we tackle that, because that's more than just the SEND population. But, you know, obviously, to me, that's one of the biggest concerns in terms of, you know, there has been previously permanent exclusions, people have stopped and said the child has an EHC plan, you know, we won't go any further, we need to look at the needs. But seeing that increase from four to thirteen last year is a concern.
Thank you. Mine's more comments and questions, actually. Just coming back to councillor Hammersley, when I was at school, we didn't have special needs either, but now, if I look back at some of the classmates that I had over time, I'm sure some of them, if it existed, would actually have come under EHC plans and special needs and SEND, so I think it's just that the children have always been there, it's just we're better at identifying it now. And I also think that then, it kind of starts to then become its own victim of its own success in a way, because suddenly, parents look at SEND as a way of getting more funding for their individual child. And there needs to be an expectation of parents of what that actually means, that it doesn't mean, because whenever parents contact myself and presumably other councillors as well, they know about the six thousand pounds, that's the thing they home in on, and it's like, well, it's not all about the six thousand pounds, there's a lot more around it than that. So I think we need to set clear expectations for parents of what this means. I'm quite, I'm a trustee of a secondary school in Rugby, and I'm very proud of the fact that actually, we're, I didn't realise there were so few, but we're one of the schools that has a resource provision for secondary school. When you walk into the school, there's no big sign saying resource provision, it's part of the school. The only thing I would say, and it kind of comes back to what you're saying about capital, it takes a lot of classrooms, so it kind of, it does, it impacts in that way in terms of the children being in the classrooms rather than any big need that it creates in the school. And you do then get the tag of, that's the secondary school that deals with the SEND kids, and it's like, these children aren't second-class citizens, these children are the same, should be treated the same as everybody else, that's why we have a resource provision. How they get there might be a little bit different, but they still get there. And so, yeah, it's quite frustrating that I kind of, I hear chatter around Rugby of, oh, you know, that's the school where the SEND kids go, it's like, no, that's the resource provision. You can have one too, you can have one in your secondary school as well, I'm sure that county would be open to any schools coming. But it is unfortunately, whilst we have a system of schools being judged by GCSE results and A-level results, the children sometimes become a number rather than a child. And I really hope that if we can get Ofsted to look at things differently and school results for exams to look at differently, that's when you'll start to get that better integration, I think, of SEND children within schools, because if schools aren't judged on their GCSE results, then that becomes less of a factor, I think, going forward. But if you're involved in any secondary schools, please encourage them to do resource provision, because it's working really well in ours, and, yeah, like I say, there's no big sign on the door, they're just children at the end of the day.
Thanks very much. I'm not sure my thinking is clear on what I'm going to try and say, so forgive me if I'm even less intelligible than normal. What worries me is the consequences of what my colleague Brian is saying at the back of me here. It seems to me that the system for judging intervention, therapy, special needs, additional support, the threshold just keeps going down and down all the time, and surely it can't always be the case that just because demand is increasing, there is a genuine need. That's what I'm trying to get at, and I don't know how you do that apart from, I don't know, being tougher, asking more penetrating questions, not automatically accepting the plea of a mother saying that little Willie has got ADHD, when in actual fact, little Willie is just really badly behaved and needs some form of strict correction. You see where I'm going, I don't want to be too Daily Mail on this, but I do, but I am, yeah. I think there is a real issue somehow in the system, the system automatically seems to reduce the threshold all the time. And are there any checks and balances on this? Is there anything that we can do? Thanks, I'm sorry, that's a bit garbled.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I don't agree that the threshold has come down, I think the threshold is where the threshold has been since, certainly since the current system has been in existence. Special education needs has only existed as a concept since nineteen eighty-one. Prior to that, children, we had a medicalised model where children were defined at different degrees of disorders of the body or the mind, and they were deemed as to be unsuitable for education, so that's where the change. So you may have found, if you were at school in the nineteen sixties or nineteen seventies, that many of those children weren't in schools, they were in institutions of different types at that time, so that's probably why you didn't meet many of them at that time, although, as councillor Simpson-Vince points out, there were also those who probably had undiagnosed needs. The new system was based on the Warnock Report and the Warnock Committee, which did a detailed analysis over a period of time. At that time, in nineteen eighty-one, they estimated that approximately twenty per cent of children would need some form of special educational needs provision during the course of their school time, which is pretty much, well, actually, slightly more than we are now in terms of where the provision, we're talking about about seventeen per cent at the moment. So I think that recognition has been there for some time, that there are that proportion of children. I think identifying who they are, what their needs are, and how we best support them, has become much more sophisticated over time since then, and that leaves us in the position that we're in now.
It's just a comment really to councillor Morgan and councillor Hammersley, I would say it takes a village to raise a child, and I don't think the villages, as in England, their culture is working the same as it used to. So I think it's difficult to put all of the burden on the early help and education, that's because the families, they know that they're a trusted resource, they're trusted people, and I think if you work more with the voluntary and community sector, people who are on the ground, that you'd find out other ways that you could support those families, that if you think that little Willie and the SEN, the children, that that's not really the whole picture. I think you do need everyone in the room, I think you've commented on public health, I think you've got the police, I think you have the need for food, I think you've got housing, there are multiple issues, and if you've got broken families where they don't have the grandparents, where you have communities that have been broken apart, where you have new housing estates where they don't have community centres and they can't connect to each other, it's a village to raise a child and the villages, there's no support there. We aren't a nation where people gather around churches anymore, and we don't have grandparents and aunts and uncles nearby for that child to connect with. So I don't think it's SEND's fault or Identifying's fault, I think it's a culture that needs.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Hammersley, Keridge, Brown and Goldby, and then that must be it, because we must move on after that.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and just further to the comment, those children were there when we were at school, but they must have had better ways of dealing with them at that time. Let's go back to some of those ways they dealt with them. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, whatever, but they just dealt with them. And it's like, money's to meet the needs, that's like bolting a stable door after the horse is gone, money's to find the cause of the need, probably would be far better. So again, these next of me are trying the early days to solve the problem earlier, which would then, farther down the line, be better financially and for all other reasons. So I don't know what the fix is, I just look back at years gone by, those people were dealt with by whatever means, it was right at the time, but, you know, it's not for me to say it was right at the time. Thank you.
Counselor Keridge.
Lovely, thanks. So I've got four. So one is the resource provision, resource provision. I had thought that was people, but apparently it's more capital, so maybe we don't need the answer now, but I would really like an explanation of exactly what it is, because I don't think it comes out. It comes out that it's really good, but obviously I don't exactly know what it is, and I'd like to, so that's one. Similarly, with the written statement of action, I remember hearing that here on a report, but I've actually forgotten what it refers to, so I'd like, again, maybe offline or maybe for all of us, like an update on exactly what that is. And as to a question, I'd like answered now, I suppose it's in the appendix perhaps, work stream one, reducing the number of requests for assessments. That sounds interesting, so I'd like to know about that. And also, associated with that, this is number three, remember, there's one more, associated with that, two and a half years ago, just after I joined the council, we were being told in this committee that plans were not really ideal, they were not the way forward unless you really needed one, and that this council was moving towards encouraging special educational needs to be dealt with as a natural part of society and school, and that we were only giving plans or agreeing plans if there was like really serious need, which answers quite a few of the questions we've had. I'm wondering if we are still at that point that we were two and a half years ago, with that intention, or if things have changed. So that's point two, point three, sorry. And point four is a whole new can of worms, and hopefully you can answer it quickly about our non-statutory provision, the eleven existing non-statutory services we offer, what are they? And how SEND transport links into that? Is that, that doesn't seem to be a statutory provision? Do we provide it to everyone? Is there a level of choice in that as far as the council goes? I know that's five, not four, sorry.
For brevity in responding to that, I might to point this to someone who is. For brevity in responding, I might to be short in some of those, in terms, just responding to councillor Hammersley, well, we do just think there's a far better understanding of what those needs are, and as much as a more sophisticated understanding of what the interventions are. I will pick up on the point though, first in terms of the, how many EHC plans, and there is still this intention, as there is nationwide, and I've met with local authorities as part of this programme across the country in similar positions, there's still an intention to, as far as we can, to meet needs at an earlier time and early intervention, and I would say that the school workforce is more skilled than it's ever been in actually supporting children with SEND, because there is such a range of needs and a better understanding of needs than there has been in the past. One of the difficulties with the system is that there is, as a system, you can apply some local criteria in terms of making decisions about whether to issue an EHC plan or not, but the statutory guidance and statutory regulations are in conflict with each other, and that's led to challenges around the local criteria that we've been using, and we've had to kind of respond to that as well, and that has led to an increase in the number of children we have with EHC plans. That's not to say that those needs are not there, it's to say that actually, in terms of kind of the local authority intervention, that's another driver for that being increased. In terms of resource provision, yes, it's generally people, so we have, in a primary school, our standard provision is, it's a specialist teacher with two teaching assistants, are a staff team that supports a group of up to eight people who should be attending their mainstream lessons but have a space to break out to for certain parts of the day and certain parts of their timetable. And in terms of secondary provision, councillor Simpson-Vince gave some examples of how that looks slightly different in a secondary school as well, and that's one of the things that I think we still need to refine our model in secondary school to include more kind of family support, partial support where required depending on the needs, and it may be more kind of therapy input as well, but that's one of the things when we're speaking to secondary schools, we're saying, you can help us develop the model for the needs in your school and your area. In terms of links to transport, that's another issue, we do have statutory requirements regarding SEN transport as set out in our transport policy. Essentially, though, if the child is over the statutory walking distance, and we have designated the school to be the nearest appropriate school, then we are responsible for the transport. There's lots of other caveats and qualifications regarding that, but that is the, that's the main point there, I've missed a couple there.
Sorry, Ross, just a couple of quick additions, I suppose, just to reiterate, supporting children in mainstream without an EHP is the ideal for those children with special educational needs, who can be supported in that way. I always would say that our focus is on reducing the need for EHPs rather than for reducing the number of EHPs, because if we take that approach, and actually, I nearly said it earlier in response to the questions to John about child protection and looked after children, it's the same focus, our focus is on reducing the need for those things rather than reducing in and of themselves. So where we are at the moment is set out in one point one in the report, which is there are about twelve thousand children in Warwickshire with identified special educational needs who are supported without an EHP within their school, and there are about three and a half thousand children of school age, so roughly kind of a fifth of the total who are supported through an EHP, either in school or in specialist provision. So very much the focus remains on the majority, as many as can properly have their needs met in those circumstances, being done in that way. So that was the first thing. The other thing was your link to capital, so Ross has explained really well what a resource provision is, how it works, it is many people, it is about that, but what we often need is a place for that to happen within the schools, and that's where the capital elements come in. And because we're talking about large numbers, it comes to quite a big sum when you add it up. In fact, it's very variable, depending on what existing accommodation the school has, in some cases it's a minor change to a room or two, in other cases we might have to build something that's dedicated space, so that can vary. I think that those are the ones that...
Just coming back, there was one thing about getting an update on the written statement of action at some maybe other time, and our statutory services, our non-statutory services, are they valued? are they val- valued for money? Are they doing what they're supposed to do, which is what we've all been talking about?
So if I respond to that, then yes, they, I, I can send you the document which lays out exactly what they are, the 11 are. But they're things like our support for hearing im- impairment, uh, is, is, is well respected, well, well valued. I was at a school the other day with two children with hea- hearing impairments where they, they were praising the support of the, of the children, uh, that, that came, came in. And also is that actually because of the support and the early intervention from that team, that in itself meant that an EHCP wasn't required for, for, for one of those children. So that was seen as a really, uh, it's, it's reasonably low incidence need, but needs that support, needs specialist equipment, needs specialist advice. And that's one of the teams that is part that we don't have to have, but we, we could trade that service, for example. But we see it as, we've seen it over many years, the benefits of having that as part of something we should do and we should fund. And, and actually, i- if you're looking at just from a financial point of view, is an investor to save and is a well valued part of our local sys- system.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, a very quick, um, response to Counselor Hammersley. And then I've got a couple of very short questions that'll hopefully be fairly snappy. So I'll do it all in one go. The children weren't in school. Lots of those children that we see in mainstream now would never have crossed the threshold of a school, um, because they were deemed unsuitable for education. And the terminology was actually educationally subnormal, severe and educationally subnormal, moderate. That's how they were categorised if they had learning difficulties, behaviour difficulties, what couldn't be fixed with caning. Sadly, I have to say, I started teaching, um, just before corporal punishment was, um, was done away with. That was never going to work. That would never work. It's a, a peculiar situation, isn't it? It wasn't, makes me think, you know, Alan Bennett, the playwright? Right, one of his fantastic plays had Thora Heard talking about her child. And she said, he's got dyslexia, but when he were at school, dyslexia wasn't invented. We had, we had raffia at the back of the class. And that's how a, a lot of that kind of thing was dealt with. So that's an observation. They honestly, they were in society. We're seeing different kinds of special needs because the pressures that exist in society now are developing all kinds of mental health issues and behaviour problems in much younger children that perhaps we wouldn't have seen before. But I'll get off my hobby horse, right, because that's, that's just one thing. The short and snappy questions are, right, are we thinking about, or would it be helpful to think about increasing the breadth of the SEN partnership board? And I'm thinking about including, now probation services might already be in there with social care. I don't know. They are, are they? Yeah, thank you. But thanks for giving me the correct, come out the archive, I do. That's why I get it wrong. Um, but the other group are voluntary and community groups that have got so much information on the background. Would it be helpful to include those more overtly? That's one short question.
Okay, so, so we engage with our parent care forum, certainly have, happy to have that discussion about the wider part partnership. We are looking to have a holistic part partnership with all key players. So happy to have that, that chat.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the last short question is the, this, right, forgive me if it gets a bit technical. There's something about understanding, developing the understanding in people about the difference between attainment, what you get through your exam results and achievement, right, which is what you can do, your capacity to learn. And that's not the same in everybody, obviously. And some children who never show on any kind of exam timetable have achieved immense things. And until we can help people understand that, we're always going to look at some children as failures. We're never going to report on what schools can really do or what our support services have done with them. So the question, right, so I know it's not a short explanation. The question is this, what plans do we have to help people, and I include Ofsted in this, understand that and report on it? And do we have any plans at all those levels?
So at the moment, it's really qualitative feedback, I would guess in terms of that. So we, we have outcomes set out in EHC plans, but at the moment, they're, they're in word documents and we don't have a way to aggregate that because that'd be the best way. Because we set outcomes in all of those individual EHC plans. And then at the annual review, we say whether those have been met or partially met and what, what needs to go forward. And certainly it, you're, you're right, Counselor, when we have conversations with, with, with families about what, it's usually, in my, in the meetings I'm in, it's about what's gone wrong, but they don't talk about, you know, how many GCSEs they're going to get. It's about feeling, uh, safe. It's about making progress. It's about relationships and, and so forth. And if you look at our EHC plan status in there, so I would say that is something that we have on an individual basis. It's something we're not able to report on a, on a kind of aggregate basis and a population basis. It's one of the things we will explore through that digital infrastructure in terms of being able to do that. I'm not confident of that. I think probably we'll get the communication bit right first. But then if, you know, if there's a way that we can extract from those EHC plans and aggregate to those outcomes, that, that, that would be the way to, to do it. But in individual conversations, that is there.
Counselor Goldby.
Thank you, Chair. Got a, a couple of things that I've jotted down as we've been talking. So for the uninitiated, for the people that actually are watching this that might have, uh, an outside interest that don't come from this world, can you actually translate words like resource provision to make it easily understandable? Because I'm, I, I say this quite often, but we're all guilty in this sort of environment of talking in, in tongues that people don't understand. So can we be a bit more plain English about these things and actually make them a bit more accessible for people who may have SEND requirements that don't understand what a resource provision actually is? Another query which kind of links into what, uh, my two colleagues, uh, Counselor Hammersley and, and, um, and Jeff have said, I think one of the questions maybe is what comes down to parenting and what comes down to actually, uh, SEND issues? How do we identify that? And then what pathways do we put people on that perhaps don't have an SEND need but do have parenting skill shortages? So how do we identify those sorts of things and assist those families? Because they must be out there. Um, there's also something to feed back on, which, um, is that one of the, one of the, the things, my screen's just gone off now, is when we look back at the five-year rise of the 37%, if I'm remembering what I've just read correctly, can we correlate that with things like a rising social media use for families? Because I've seen sites where families are swapping tips on how to get their children diagnosed on Facebook. They're all out there. Can we correlate that to something like that? Because there has been a rise in that sort of thing within that five-year period, I would hazard a guess. So perhaps that is something that is informing this sort of route to get more people into the request of, um, diagnoses in the first place. What percentage do we have of assessments that lead to a full diagnosis? Because that, that evidence is not clear. So are we getting 90% of people that come for diagnoses having then getting a full diagnosis? Do we have people who come into the system expecting a diagnosis and don't get one? How, what is that? Because we don't, we don't have that information to actually compare what, who are, or the numbers being presented to the numbers that then go on to qualify. And then can we break that down even further into, are there any causal effects? Or again, is it per area? Are we getting more requests for diagnoses per certain, uh, communities than others? Are there communities that we are not getting di- uh, requests for diagnoses from at all that may have more vulnerabilities that we're not actually exploring? So we're not, that, that information is not held in there. So are there any hotspots of need? Are there any particular schools that are producing more requests for diagnoses than others? Are they in particular areas? What, what are the causal effects and factors there? Do we have any of that information? And to say that it, it takes a village, I absolutely agree with you on that. But that is a very idealistic view and it's not something that this council is going to ever fix. We cannot change culture. It's not, it's not the council's job to change the culture of, of the environment that we're in. It's, we're there to assist. And, and I do take offence sometimes at the assumption that as councillors, we're not connected. Not only am I a councillor, but I am a professional. I have a commercial, uh, job. I have, I have all sorts of things going on. I am not just a councillor. So to, to the, the assumption that I'm, I'm seeing again, that, that we don't understand, we are very much embedded in our communities. So we can speak with authority on these things because that is exactly why we are here. Yesterday, I spent the day, um, having arranged a, a seminar with, uh, an organisation to come in and actually help us. And some of the county officers were there with relation to, uh, knife crime and, and reductions in knife crime. And I bring my corporate hat into my political world because I know that that's the right thing to do. And that has been something that we will achieve as a, as a group. So just don't assume that we don't know what we're talking about just because we're councillors or that we're not embedded in our communities because we are. So if, if you can't answer my questions today, I'm happy for a follow-up. But I really would like that information because I think if we're going to do a deep dive, we need to not just keep looking at the outcomes. Again, it's the pathways to how we get to that. What are the numbers? And what, are there any causal effects? Is there any correlation to all of these things that I've asked questions about? Thank you.
In terms of the terminology, uh, we, we, we accept that. We'll, we'll try and make sure that, that that's more, more clear in, in, in future. I guess this is followed on from, from other, other pa- papers and there have been some assumptions made. And we shouldn't make those assumptions. So I accept that. In, in terms of the more, the more broader i- iss- issues, that, that they are, there are national reports and research looking, looking in, in, into that in terms of, you know, I haven't heard the one particularly regarding social media, but there are other reasons for that. And that is set out elsewhere in terms of what we're trying to achieve in this re- report, I guess. But again, we can signpost to, to some of those. I mentioned in terms of the, uh, we actually have 78 slides of evidence and I'm happy to, to share those to show, to tackle it from different views and look at the, I'm happy to, to share those and go through what that's told us. It has been a very thorough process through the Delivery Better Value Programme. It is less, this is less about diagnosis. That's more the kind of medical pathway. This is about learning needs. What does the child need to support them to progress their education? So this isn't about waiting upon diagnosis. This is about what support does the child need? And does that support require an EHC plan in terms of extra resources and what to make that happen? Okay, okay. And in, in terms of where we've been, there's two main decision points regarding that. One is the decision to assess, where the national average of decisions not to assess is just above 20%. And we've been at 50% for, over the last 18 months. And we've been challenged upon that. Challenged both strategically, but also challenged individually through the mediation and tribunal process. And that's something we've been working with our parent care forum to begin to, that we are actually ass- assessing more. I mentioned earlier this difference between the statutory guidance and the regulations. So that's one, that's one of the areas, uh, that, that has been tested. In terms of those, there's then a decision to issue an EHC plan, where we are currently at 95% of those who have an assessment have an EHC plan issued. The, sorry, we're at 98%. The national average is 95%. So there is a common path. And again, that you can challenge that. So we, we make decision, we make roughly 6,000 decisions every year, which can be challenged through mediation and tribunal on an individual basis. And again, I can go into some. 2% of those who have an assessment, but we, previously, I, I, prior to the, prior to, at the beginning of this year, from January to end of October, roughly 50% were being agreed to assess and 50% weren't. But that was a cause of particular, uh, conflict and frustration within the, the system. And that is something that, that we have, that we have changed and will actually be in, increasing, as I say. And part of that is the difference between the statutory framework and statutory guidance. But I'm happy to go through all that day. There, there's, there's further data I can go into in those 78 slides, which goes into that particular detail in, in more detail.
Just, just for the benefit of today, and I know we've got a member of the press, it's just 50% of people, so out of 100% of people who go into the pathway for potential SEND, EHCP provision, 50% of those people don't get further than the initial first steps. Then beyond that, 98% of the 50% that do then end up with an EHCP plan at the end. Is that a very simplistic?
It's, it's changed a little bit in more recent months because it's been an area that's been focusing on because we, our parent care forum have challenged us regarding that 50% figure. But yes, that was the, the position. Over the last couple of months, it's been about 75% of those have had a di- a di- decision to assess. And if you look at the figures nationally, as I say, it's about 75% is the national decision on decisions to assess. And it's 95% then go on to a di- a decision to issue.
Final question for my chair. What's the triggering factors for people to actually get into that system? To say that the child potentially needs to have, uh, uh, an EHCP assessment? What, what's the benchmark for that? How does that actually work?
So, uh, in, in, in terms of the, 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 the regulations state that the child may benefit from having an, an EHC plan, uh, in, in terms of, of going forward and may have special educational needs. We then apply a local criteria on top of that to say, has the school shown evidence of those special educational needs? How they have responded to it in what we call a graduated approach? But how have they supported and done their own interventions? Have they used their £6,000 worth of funding, which is expected and was, uh, referred to earlier? And have they used external professionals? Those are our local criteria, which is in line with the SEND code of practice. So those are the four kind of tests that we apply when we look at a, a, a request.
Thank you, Chair. So every child that's assessed and then gets an EHCP, the school then gets £6,000 for that? Or where does that £6,000 go to?
So the, the funding situation is schools get a, what's called notional funding. So they get a pot of funding which is broadly based upon, uh, dep- dep- deprivation factors. It's based on a formula. Uh, so they get notional funding. They are expected to use that, contribute £6,000 of that notional funding or up to £6,000 for children with S- SEN. If it goes above £6,000, that is seen as unreasonable for the school. And that is one of the criteria to say the local authorities should use the high needs block to top up the, the, the funding that they then have. So if the support for a child in a mainstream school is seen, that is required to be £10,000, it's, you know, it's paying probably for a teaching assistant and so many hours of a teaching assistant, then you will then say the, the, the total cost is, say, £10,000. The school should contribute £6,000 and the local authority will top that up with a further £4,000.
Thank you. I think that's been a very interesting presentation plus debate from, from the floor. So I'm going to move to the recommendation. Okay? Note the updates of the current financial position of the high needs block and the future demand and expectation forecast from the high needs block for children and young people with SEND. Number two, endorses the four projects proposed in the Delivery Better Value Grant application attached on, at appendix one. And three, considers the comments on developments since the public consultation on the local SEND offer. Does everybody agree? Agreed. Thank you very much indeed, Ross. Right, we now move on to Leah Adams and she says the achievement of Warwickshire children and young people in statutory assessment 2023. Leah.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Leah. I joined, uh, the Education SLT team last, uh, summer after being a serving headteacher in rugby for a significant amount of time, should I say. And I was therefore going to show you a, a visual presentation, but just for the, in the spirit of keeping to good time, I'll keep it brief if it's okay. And I'll present a very, uh, brief overview for you and then give you a chance, uh, to have some comments and questions at the end. So I think that would be more valuable, if that's okay, Chair. So, um, I'd like to start just by giving a very brief context around, um, the changes to how children and young people's statutory assessments have been undertaken. As you'll know, during COVID, there were some significant changes, particularly in key stage four. So the report provides some of that context as we try to stabilise and get back to normal in education. Within that context, I think it's really important to share with you and take some time to explain and outline some of the work that we've been doing in education, particularly in the School Effectiveness Team, to really work with schools and settings incredibly closely, um, linking back actually to the conversation. Um, linking back actually to the conversations we've been having around special educational needs and early years. So I wanted to mention the education strategy. You'll know that that's under development. But a key piece of work following on from that is our School Effectiveness Strategy, which I'm currently working on uh to be launched this September with a particular emphasis on a district leadership uh structure. And the reason I want to mention that is that one of the biggest challenges, I think, of presenting a report of this nature to you is that delicate balance between giving you a significant and vast amount of information. But also giving you the opportunity to drill deep enough into the real issues and ask some really pertinent questions. So I want to provide that, that context that as we move forward, our strategy is to work within our five districts. And lots of the ways that we will work as a school effectiveness team and in our team around the school approach will be much more focused on a district model. Which I'm hoping will mean that when we come together to discuss some of um our children and young people outcomes, you'll feel more able to have those high quality conversations. I also wanted to mention the Warwickshire Education Partnership Board, which is a new strategic group that represents children and young people from zero to twenty five. It has headteachers, CEOs, um. We also have Teaching School Hub representation, significant, significant officer representation from both education and children families. Um, and I wanted to mention that in the context of, of this report because that will be the strategic place that we can have conversations about some of the issues and some of the, the areas that we want to tackle and maintain that ambition. Underpinning all of that, the School Effectiveness Team and under that new School Effectiveness Strategy by September twenty four will have a redefined way of working. And the key thing within that will be the team around the school model. And listening to conversations so far, I think it links really closely to the conversations we've been having about special educational needs. Um, and some of our conversations around children in care or who are receiving early help, those disadvantaged children. Because of course in this report, those were another key group of children and young people we want to focus on. So I want to mention the team around the school model because I think it's important that um you have uh an awareness of where we are aiming to move um our ways of working. And the team around the school model will be that the education and children and families teams as a whole work strategically in a risk assessment process to really make sure that our schools are in the best possible position to support the children and young people that they have in their schools. And when I say schools, I should actually say settings, including nurseries. Um, because this of course is, is from zero upwards. So I'm excited about the team around the school model because I think that in order to support some of the children that we've been discussing today, we need to make sure our settings are as equipped as possible. That means we can make sure that as many of them, um, for example, who are special educational needs and have disability can be in mainstream settings. So a lot of the work, for example, that my early years team are doing and the virtual school team are doing are making sure that settings and practitioners and leaders feel confident and equipped um to support those children and families. But that's a, a, a very brief overview of context. So I'll move swiftly on just for the spirit of time. So you have in the report an overview of performance from early years to post sixteen. And I wanted to, to pick up on early years overall. Um. We can see that our, our children at that age um by comparison do relatively well, but I think I wanted to, to note that the level of complexity of needs and perhaps that disparity between those who perform well at early years and those who don't is perhaps widening. So again, linked into the conversations we've perhaps had so far, um, we are incredibly ambitious in the early years space. As Nigel's mentioned earlier, we are working on an integrated delivery plan in collaboration with our health and children and families partners. There is a real mixed picture in early years and the integrated early years plan, building on the J S and A review from zero to five is incredibly important because it's, it's about that focus before school. The intention is to make sure that children don't start school, start reception, uh where settings and providers are surprised. The intention is to get in as early as possible. So that work is exciting. And I think schools and settings are talking about lower starting points from our pupils in early years. But I think that's due to the complexity of need and some of those additional issues um that perhaps early help might might support with. But I did also want to mention here that early years providers and settings are talking about um linking in a little bit to councillor Goldby, your comment around parenting. There are lots of comments um and feedback from settings around the level of support and the lower um starting points of some children perhaps that need support with toileting or doing some of those more basic things and self-care and so on. So there is, I think the message from me for early years is that overall our children do well. Um, but we have incredibly high ambition to make sure that we can bring our services together in an integrated way to do even better. At key stage one, um again, our, our children um overall do well. Um, and there has been lots of consideration around key stage one. Of course, that's the key stage just after children leave the early years and foundation stage. And because of that lower starting point, where perhaps in early years, there's been some focus more on communication, characteristics and how to behave and socialise and how to uh make sure you can care for yourself. That's kind of fed into year one phonics and into key stage one where there's been lots of catch up required. So although overall in year one phonics and in key stage one, Warwickshire, we compare favourably. Um, I think again, it's really important that we recognise that in key stage one, that's the time when we are giving those children the most basic education. They need to learn to read and write. Um, and be competent in their mathematics so that when in they, when they move into key stage two, they can access that full breadth of curriculum. In key stage two, um, there is an interesting picture. Overall, Warwickshire does well and, and um, I think the most important thing for me to mention here is that some of the issues that we perhaps thought were a secondary issue in the past are now moreover prevalent in primary school. So things such as poor attendance, exclusion. And I, I must point out actually that it's not only in key stage two, unfortunately, it is also um even younger on some occasion. But things like elective home education, things like emotionally based school avoidance, some mental health and some other difficulties that perhaps early help might be supporting are absolutely impacting at key stage two. And I think overall, children are, and have come back from the disruption of Covid well. And I think key stage two pupils have um their learning behaviours and their ways and methodologies of learning re, reestablished. But I do think that there are some challenges around, quite frankly, if they're not in school and they're not able to access that environment, they aren't going to learn. And that is why the connection between children and families and education is growing even more uh much stronger and we're working really closely on some of those hot topics. So to refer back to the Warwickshire Education Partnership Board, we can't talk about these issues in isolation. I think it was you councillor Rudehouse that pointed out in early years, you can't have education on one side and early years on the other. So that's the intention of the partnership board. The partnership board is a, a board where all of those multidisciplinary teams will talk about those challenging issues that we know then impact on outcomes in school. So for example, we've been talking about uh numbers of exclusions and we've been talking about that with our counterparts from children and families. So I'm really grateful to, to them for, for joining us in that. Um, at secondary school, um, again, I, I, I won't, um, just, I'm thinking about time. I won't go into too much detail, but again, I think the, the the biggest point to note is the external factors that are influencing um our performance. Overall, um, there are some real successes within the report, but it can't be ignored that simply if a, if a, a young person is not attending secondary school, that they won't be able to access that full curriculum. So again, um, I'm really pleased that as an education service, we've been working with children and families to think about managed moves, offsite direction, fair access protocols, what we do to avoid and prevent exclusions. As Ross mentioned earlier, um, I went to two um secondary networks this week to discuss how we provide resource provisions and how we um adapt the teaching and provision um that's going on in the school. Forgive me, that's an offside terminology, but in simple terms, mainstream schools need to adjust what they do to make sure that all of the children with varying need can access that. So I'm quite excited actually about the work that we're doing a, a, across, across those areas. I think if you don't mind me skipping along to um disadvantaged children and then I'll, I'll, I'll close, Chair, so that there's time for, for questions. Um. The, the, the dataset that you have been provided with is, is vast and significant. And as I said, I still think um there is more data to present to you and Jonny and I are quite ambitious about what we present to you. And you can have the option perhaps to, to read it or not. But at this point, I just wanted in the, in the disadvantaged space to draw your attention to a couple of key points really. The first is that the gap between the attainment of Warwickshire disadvantaged pupils and the national non-disadvantaged, which is how we um calculate that gap, is simply wide in all areas. That's the headline news. But I think in the, in the report, um, the one disadvantaged table that you have, the most interesting thing to look at and the thing that we are looking at as an education team to use as an opportunity is actually the bit at the bottom where it provides you with information around your top performing districts. Um. In reference to all pupils, disadvantaged pupils, the widest gap and the smallest gap. Because what this tells you is that in different districts, different things are happening. We know the narrative that in Uneton and Bedworth, we are concerned overall and that typically children and young people do less well. But actually, there's a, there's another layer to that narrative. Because actually the children who are disadvantaged do incredibly well um by comparison to other districts. And it's not a surprise that um in some of the districts, um, when pupils overall perform incredibly well, that district is likely to have a wider gap. So the idea of moving to a team around the school and a district model is to help two things. One, make sure that at a district level, we have a better, a more localised understanding of what's happening and what those barriers are so that we can truly tackle them. And two, use the Warwickshire Education Partnership Board as a way of connecting districts. For example, what can um some of our districts that do less well with our disadvantaged children and young people learn from our districts that do incredibly well? So there are, we've discussed them already this morning, there are many reasons and many um factors that will influence a child and young person's performance. But what I'm hoping to have got across in my presentation of the report is that we are now looking at a very strategic approach to making sure we're clearer about what the barriers are so that we can have that district level strategy and planning and hopefully measure um the impact we're having much more effectively. I think it might be worth me pausing there, Chair, and asking if anyone wishes to comment or ask any questions unless Jonny, you want to add anything.
And just a cou- couple of brief, brief points really, mindful of times going on. And the Warwickshire Education Partnership Board, great, wonderful. Just like to understand exactly who's on there and the linkages to where it goes. And I'm also mindful that in different places, there's three places from an NHS with health perspective, Integrated Care Partnership um perspective. And when you sit at a place, there's a lot of stuff being discussed, but this doesn't really, every, doesn't even touch on the radar. Doesn't even come through really. It's more NHS driven uh on there. So there's something about actually how we, how we broker that in and make that more of that because quite clearly there was some funding which got pulled by the Integrated Care Board um at the last minute around inequalities funding and the rest of it. Uh, and there would have been opportunities around that, I think, in, in places, certainly in North and South and in rugby where that could have potentially been bought in and got in that. So there's something, something around that really. I'd just like to understand, yeah, where those linkages are and actually can we break it down into places, places getting that message. Um, because from a commissioning point of view, the Warwickshire Care Collaborative and the Mental Health Collaboratives are are, what, a subcommittee now of the Integrated Care Board, is it any time now, coming through? And, and therefore they will be making decisions and then each place representative there will be um even like voting through and, and supporting stuff, which will be happening. So it's, it's, again, it's that clear linkage that we need to make corporately.
Thank you. I think in terms of the partnership board, more than happy to share more details of, of representation and membership. Um, we also extend the invitation, I know some um councillors have attended to observe and understand um the opportunities and benefits of that partnership board. So I'm happy to do that and I'm sure Chair and Helen will tell me how to. In terms of the place-based um and uh more district level integrated planning, everything you've described is exactly our endeavour. Uh, we have a colleague in the School Effectiveness Team that's moved over now into our Education Transformation Team who is a place-based coordinator. And now it's formed a significant part of our transformation work because we know that to enable our education service to be able to do what it needs to do, we need to transform the way that we're working into that place-based approach. So I think we've got the right person in the right place to be able to make those connections for us now. But if you want to.
Could it just? I think it may be terminology of that place. Because it's the health place, which has got the partnership board, so in rugby, North Warwickshire and in South Warwickshire and around there, then there's your place as well, which is happening. And this is what I mean, because so there's a different conversations are happening at different levels. And it's just a matter of that place and making, making that, making that work effectively. I mean, the quickest way is to get that A three flip chart and just draw some lines really, but.
Yeah, just to respond really quickly, which is that we, we have agreed with place partnership chairs or with the District of Warwick Chief Exec who chaired the place partnerships, that we will have a, a, a single method of um engaging through our levelling up agenda and that those place partnerships will, will, rather than creating something separate, they will pick up that agenda. And I think the education inequalities elements need to feed in through that. Uh, and we've agreed that executive directors and directors will attend the place partnerships. And I think it's Mark Ryder, Rob Powell and Sarah Duxbury who will attend each of them. And to take the, the council's kind of actions and agendas away, if you like, and make sure that our levelling up activities fit in with those wider inequalities pieces away. But I think it is a work in progress.
Thank you. Just, just to elaborate a bit, bit further on the partnership board. So the problem we were trying to solve is how do we communicate with two hundred and fifty schools over, over five districts? And uh improve the communication um between, between the council and make our presence felt. So there's various boards in, in, in Warwickshire, there was an Education Challenge Board, which So there's various boards in 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 Warwickshire. There was an education challenge board which met quarterly. And there's various different different areas, but they didn't somehow connect um and get together. So what we did was we looked at the foundations that were there. Uh as the report says, there's there's fourteen consortia areas to do with primary, which groups of schools collaborate and work together. And there's four in the secondary setup. So what we did was we thought, well, let's use that and get that membership together. Let's include early years, let's include uh further education in that as well. And we'll introduce a monthly meeting. So there are regular meetings between the council and uh and all its schools. So in effect, those monthly meetings are a meeting in which two hundred and fifty schools are represented there. And we thought we'd take that even further and have a more holistic view with schools and the inclusion of children and families element as well. So there's a holistic picture of the entire education services that are that is at that meeting. And what that has allowed us to do in a very short space of time, if we're connecting everything together, in terms of what you've heard Ross talk about with with SEND as well, is when we need to take strategic issues, that board is where it's raised. And so you've got all the heads representatives there. They then go and speak that back to their consortia so that every single head in the county and and educational setting knows and understands what the local authority is trying to do and how to do it. And it's quite powerful in terms of getting heads together to show them data, to show them these projections, to show them how actually the decisions that they make at local level impact on a on a county-wide level when it comes to things like exclusions, attendance, alternative provision, approach to special educational needs, the need for resource provision, against different areas in the council. It's become it's become quite a powerful tool, but powerful forum, if you like, for um bringing bringing school leaders together to understand their part in the whole. We've got a very mixed economy here, as you've seen at the beginning of this report. We've got two hundred and fifty schools. Um and roughly half of them are academies and even more of those are devolved into separate multi-academy trusts and some are single academies. It's a very fragmented picture out there a- as a result of, you know, the development of education, uh you you know, in the in the last ten to twelve years. But we're trying, we're breaking down those barriers and we're treating schools as individuals, treating heads as individuals. And this this board has really allowed us to do that and be really strategic in our approach. And it also gives us um the ability to invite key partners, for example, whether it's health or whether it's other people. So we've now got that forum there to get people on board. I mean, the feedback so far has been very positive. Um and certainly our presence as a local authority is far better felt now uh perhaps than, you you know, it's far better be- be- better felt now. And we've got that, we continue to build on that. So just to give you a bit bit of extra sort of understanding and rationale around that and how that's improved our relations and our presence.
Thank you. Have I missed anybody? Did anyone speak? Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Uh so just very briefly and then a question. Consortium, is that the same as academies or what what's that?
Apology. So a a consortium is quite simply a group. So the primary groups of head teachers have come together into fourteen, localised geographically um and they work as groups. So there's a there's a number of different sizes within that, but it is, it's much more of an informal arrangement where they come together to network. Okay?
So it's just something for us, really, is it? For the county?
It's a, it it all sits under, I suppose, our ways of working. And as Johnny mentioned, because we are such a large county with such a vast number of schools in different districts, breaking into consortium groups has proven to be really effective. The head teachers appreciate that networking. We as officers can go uh and meet them and they will all be present. So it's our way of getting in um and grouping those schools together by areas.
Yeah, okay. Uh so we've worked with all the schools and all the different academies and come up, they've come up and we've come up with this, these consortia. One person presumably or maybe more represents them at these boards. That's good, thank you. I didn't didn't know about that. Um So um I suppose we do a lot of work with all of these schools through the consortium. Most academies presumably make nearly all their decisions and I've I've heard what you said about um these these meetings, uh sharing information with with the academies, uh I suppose, and getting a better relationship with them. What about um the early years, which aren't listed on this this sheet? But presumably they're all private enterprises. Um what's our influential reaction with them?
Um so we have, um as we said, the the consortium and the secondary consortium. And I just want to mention, just to extend that answer actually, that we also have a a approximately a hundred and thirty-three um keep, what we call keeping in touch meetings with our multi-academy trusts and single academy trusts. So just in that space, we've got the consortium working, but also a a method by which we're also engaging with those trusts as well. So those things are happening um simultaneously and then the partnership board brings all that together. In the early year space, it's a a much more challenging space because you have a mixture of nursery settings that are perhaps in primary schools. So that's one group that are possibly easier to reach and engage. You have a group of um nursery maintained schools in their own right. Then, as you mentioned, there's the PVI, the private voluntary and independent sector, and then there's the childminders. So within um our early years team, we use different methods to reach out to those different groups. Because depending on who they are will depend on how able and and um what time they have. So for example, to get our training and our messages and our news out to childminders, we're sometimes doing that at the weekends and evenings. To um bring some of our networks together for those nursery settings that are in schools, we can sometimes do that in the day in the same way that we would with head teachers um of of primary and secondary. So the answer is that there is a mixture of different ways to either bring them together face to face, bring them together virtually, provide training for them if they can. But of course, they've got some real challenges in early years to be able to have the capacity to be released for training and meetings and management style discussions. So it is a real challenge. But I'm really pleased to say that in the early year space, the level of um positive relationships and networking is incredibly, incredibly high. And I think that for the most part, um our our providers feel very well supported. The evidence of that as a as an example is in our most recent early years um caseload review where we look at settings and we risk assess and we get a sense of of what settings are perhaps in difficulty. Our team, our early years team, know those settings incredibly well. Considering there are around six hundred of them, it's impressive to see how much level of detail and how thorough they are in their knowledge of those of those settings. So I think to summarise, it's a challenging picture because of of all the different groups and all the different ways that they are working. And as a workforce, it's a challenging time for them. But I think we are using lots of different methods to reach out to them and build those relationships.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a thought, is the the lack of retention of head teachers having any effect on what you're trying to achieve? Because uh you know, I know, we all know that that heads are leaving quicker than you can replace them. So is that having an effect?
I uh I do appreciate the irony as well that I'm one of those leavers. So um I represent one of those leavers last academic year. So I I suppose I'll start the answer with that, that it is worth noting that there are possibly two populations. There are head teachers that are leaving the profession um to go on to greater things. I'd like to describe this role as that. Um some of them, if you think about the the complexity of our our educational landscape in terms of multi-academy trusts, there are significant opportunities for head teachers to progress in multi-academy trusts in various different strategic leadership roles. So I think part of that challenge around retention is that the opportunities for head teachers, rightly so, are are vast. Um the other challenge, of course, is perhaps what you were alluding to moreover, which is that yes, the job, I can speak from experience, is a challenging job. Um but I think the way that we can, in fact, before I move on to that, I just want to mention one other thing. In the School Effectiveness Team, I think it's really important to mention the pastoral and um support offer that we give to head teachers in the School Effectiveness Team is incredible. Um they are given peer mentors, they're given coun- counselling coaching, they are given um support from local head teachers that are perhaps more experienced. And I think both anecdotally, in terms of my visits, I've been to visit thirty schools so far since um taking up post. But both in terms of feedback from those things, it is incredibly positive how well-supported head teachers are feeling. But I think just to summarise, in order to secure that retention in in Warwickshire in terms of our head teachers, I think it goes back to our partnership working. As Johnny mentioned, as we're trying to work with the multi-academy trusts and some of the single academy trusts, the DICEs, um some of our local authority maintained schools, all of our different stakeholders, we're moving now to a world of partnership where we're trying to make sure that they feel like they have a place around the table to help to work together and tackle some of those issues. And I think head teachers um find it difficult when they feel that they can't make that difference. So I think what we're going to try to do um to hold on to our head teachers as much as we can, as well as doing some lovely head teacher conferences with lots of lovely lunch and sandwiches, um we are going to make sure that they feel that they are able to be part of that system-led um culture. And I think that will really, really help um to make sure that heads feel that they can make the difference.
Oh, can I just quickly add to that? We do also in the School Effectiveness Team have an aspiring head teacher course, um which is um for aspiring senior leaders in schools to come forward and and hear about what it's like to be a head teacher. And we've got some successes already of of colleagues that have have gone on to Headship in Warwickshire.
Please quickly.
Thank you, Jeff. It's just, um the pressures that heads have been under, IT, HR, et cetera, et cetera, not just being the head of teachers, we know. They've been put under so much pressures, hence why they think, I didn't sign up this, I'm out. As you've left for whatever reason, mon- monetary or fetish, whatever. But it's if if you're trying to get anywhere, stability with the top people to achieve what you want to achieve is paramount. Too many comings and goings, you'll never, never achieve it. So difficult as it is, it's the stability from the top to be passed down. How you achieve that, that's that's for you and others. But but again, extremely difficult. Thank you.
Have anybody else? Are are we okay? I would just like to ask one question myself. Um in the early years, we have voluntary nurseries in our villages. How are you going to get in touch with those people?
As I mentioned, councillor Humphries, it is incredibly challenging, especially at the moment when we know uh just around the corner, we have increased entitlements. So there are lots of settings that are nervous and apprehensive about how that will look. And they're apprehensive about how they can be both financially sustainable. But in terms of the volun- uh the voluntary um settings, I think our approach to outreach and engagement is very similar to that of our other our other PVI settings. The challenge we have is that at times there are groups running that we know we haven't quite reached. So the early years team are working incredibly hard to try to understand from that group what some of those barriers are. Is it time? Is it is it location? Is it? What are the reasons that we perhaps don't have that relationship? So I think simply, I don't think it's going to be a quick fix. I think it's about trying to understand how they work, where they work, um how they organise their time so that we can try and adjust our offer um in the best way we can, which is basically our strategy and endeavour for all of those um nursery settings. Because they are so diverse and different, our team, a small team, might I add, of four in the early years quality uh and safeguarding team, those four individuals, two teachers, two teaching assistants in essence, are adjusting and changing how they communicate in the best way and monitoring as they go levels of engagement. But they also have an eye on who they haven't heard from and they're targeting those and getting in uh where they can. The numbers of settings that are not being engaged with are decreasing.
A lot of that, thank you, Phil, a lot of our um communication, if you like, is through parish councils and parish council um uh chairs. So if you ever want to know anything, I think that's the best way to actually start something because you've only got to go to one person then. So, you know, if it's any help, but I'll get to the recommendation. Better turn that back on. The recommendation that children and young people, overview and scrutiny committee, consider and comment on the performance of children and young people in Warwickshire state-funded scores in statutory national tests. Everybody agree?
Agree.
Thank you very much, Leah. We now get on to the um the work programme. Have we got anything? I didn't have my pre-mated. Sorry. Nothing, nothing before this.
No, it was, um sorry, just a chance for officers to confirm they're happy with the work programme and the items for each month and that's it.
Does anybody not agree with the work programme in front of them? Oh.
Just just had one thing is that I think it's on the forward plan about an update from youth centres that was asked for all members. I think it's been put on to the June meeting on mod.gov. Um Helen's aware of that, I think.
Well, I was debating whether to mention that anyway. Is there any chance we can get an earlier written something before that? It's a long way away and and the service provision seems to be diving in my area. So it would be nice to know what's actually going on. Not now, but some some paper, brief perhaps, on why it seems to be diving.
The paper's already on mod.gov and ready to come to you, so absolutely you can. I'll send it to you, I'll circulate it to the committee.
Anybody else got anything to say about the work programme? No? Do we leave it at that then? Yeah? Right. The date of the next meeting is twenty seventh of February at ten o'clock. And I hope I had a load of traffic like I did this morning. Thank you ever so much for coming. The bit I did here was absolutely fantastic. And, you know, you're all working well and very, very hard. Thank you very much indeed.